Six fifty-nine.
Deputy, can you hear us okay?
Can't hear you.
Yes, we can.
Perfect.
Thank you. I now have seven o'clock. I would like to welcome you to the Thursday, July eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. This meeting is being conducted live, also on Zoom. We're allowed to conduct it both via Zoom and live, based on recent criteria set out by the governor. The first item this evening, Jim, is the continuation of public hearing on thirty Locust Street. What I'd like to express to everyone.
May real quick, we have a quick A and R that I might be able to move along if that's okay?
Yep.
All right, guys, so this one may look familiar. It's just an approval not required plan on Lake and Prospect, Street Prospect being in Franklin, Lake being in town. This is a six lot subdivision. Nothing has changed from the lot that we've discussed last time. However, they have made some indications on the plan set that highlights that the lots one through six, which are the lots being created, and that all front in Franklin and our lot area that meet Franklin's requirements, did not meet the Bellingham zoning requirements. They also have in your package a letter from the applicants' title insurance requesting this from both towns for that purpose. So in vetting this with counsel, both of us agree that, you know, we certainly can offer recommendations to sign this now that it is evident that these lots will not be meet Bellingham zoning requirements, and therefore, the building inspector will not be granting a building permit for these. So what are the questions I'm happy to answer? I know the applicants here can answer as well. And if not, certainly just a request of votes assigned.
Do you have a motion?
I'll move to sign the A and R.
Do I have a second? Second. Any discussion? Jim, this does not alter anything from our last reading, correct?
That's correct. This is a separate project. But anybody that's following that preliminary subdivision should know that these are being carved out of that project. So this is a six lot, single family, that's all fronting in Franklin. So but it doesn't change anything from our last meeting.
Your motion, fourth, to approve the signing of the A and R. All favorably, please, by saying opposed. That motion passes unanimously.
Could just have some quick signatures and then we'll get on our way.
So you can sort of sign on Bellingham.
Yep, let's make sure, I think we're the top ones. Yep, Bellingham. So sharply from my alarm, these two and then.
Two sheets. Two sheets.
Yeah, two sheets for each, right? Because you need to bring Franklin.
Yeah.
And then it's two sheets for each of the paper, which you can send us directly. There's a feeling on the paper over there that might be. Yeah, so it's so the title block lot description without people's own titles in the title, Bellingham, one, two, three, four, five, six. And so what's going on here is it's one acre lots, because we only have top line. And so if it was to be, you know, have to list and out, it's what that looks like.
Jim, there's three here. Should there be three?
Yeah, there should be three, because four total. Thank you. Only reason there's two sheets is because we have two right now. We have hands and tablets somewhere if anybody. Come prepared. Yeah, I missed it on the.
Just follow your signatures, too.
Oh, Liz, you're gonna be trouble. Top line.
Oh, wasn't I supposed to?
He's giving me the last comment. I didn't want to break the news. All right, I've done it myself. I got the call.
Yeah, you get the call later tonight.
Get it out now.
Are you on any two here?
Yep. Thank you. Yep. Yeah, we always. Hey, Dave.
Go to the town archives and Jim and retire.
Yeah. Dave. Yeah, it's need to do each one. Yep.
Oh, and the Stevens one?
Yeah.
I wouldn't sign off top line.
We have another round here?
Yeah.
I guess so. I led you all astray.
Yeah, you want to pass them around? Everybody got them? Yeah.
It's a matter of.
Blue and black works by that.
Okay. Was that?
Yeah.
March Frank was some paper we were signing all the reasons. No, money.
You're out of here.
You did change the order. That's good.
Maybe that has something in.
Leave that there. Guys.
You could have gone way worse. Sorry.
Yes. Thanks, Jim. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Evening.
I'm gonna see you. So Jim, tonight, we're here to discuss thirty Locust Street, special residential use, townhouse dwelling, development plan approval, and stem water management plan. Before we go any further, like, you have an update on the sewer?
I know the applicants here can certainly speak to that.
Yes, I actually met with the diocese last week in Providence, and we worked out an arrangement, but went back to the lawyers, and the lawyers, you know, come to fifty questions again. So the diocese is all set. First, the matter is satisfying the lawyers. They throw a lot of questions, and I'm not going to get into it all.
No, I don't want to.
But they throw a lot of questions because when you deal with the church, they say, you know, it's not like, yeah, with me or with you, and, you know, we look at, it could be here for twenty years, or, you know, if your kids are there, it could be thirty years. They said, this is forever. This is perpetual. So one of the things in discussing with my lawyers is that if the town was going to take this over, you know, I didn't commit to that now, because I don't have any confirmation from the town. If the town's going to take this over, we can get clarified now, that would make a lot of the questions that the church has would go away. So right now, I've got it that the condominium association, initially me, second condominium association would be taking over the line, and that there's a strong chance the town would, but I can't commit for the town, obviously, I can't speak for the town. So I had a brief conversation with town planner just a few minutes ago, that if I could get that clarification, you know, from my point of view, it doesn't need to be. But if the town's going to take it over, a lot of the questions go away that the church has with me, with the condominium association. So it's going to get done either way, but it will be done easier and more streamlined if we can know now whether the town is going to be taking the line over or not. So I asked town planner if we could maybe have a conversation with the DPW director and get that clarified, and we just move things along. Again, I believe it's going to get done anyways.
Okay.
We did move another giant step forward. When it goes back to the lawyers, it becomes another whole, whole different deal.
I think in our previous meeting, this is somewhat of a lynchpin on the whole development.
I understand.
I think the town would like to see a sewer access there. And the feeling from the residents was the same last meeting. I know at one point, you said we're on the one yard line?
Yes.
Are we on like the two inch yard line now?
I think we're on the two inch line, but, well, you said residents were looking for it to be tied to the sewer. My understanding is if the residents are going to be tying into this, which we are going to.
No, let me rephrase that. Some of the neighbors have a concern about having the sewer treatment plan on site.
Okay.
They would much prefer to have, you know, Bellingham or sewer to the site as opposed to an onsite water treatment. And that was echoed by several residents.
And the sewer treatment plan was an option from day one?
I understand that.
But it's not something we wanted to pursue.
And you just put that out there as a placeholder?
Yes, sir.
So you get this process going?
Yes, sir.
You have option A and option B?
Yes.
The primary option for you right now is sewer as opposed to option B, which is onsite.
Yes.
Okay.
I've never dealt with anyone with such a prolonged negotiation and vetting as I have with this start here. It's been more than a year I've been working on this.
Okay.
On a regular basis. I've never had this experience, which is sit down, we make an agreement with someone, we send it to the lawyers, we paper up, make a legal, and then, you know, the lawyers can maybe drag it out for a month, maybe six weeks, never goes longer than two months. So it's very unusual, the negotiations and dealing with the church as an entity. So I can tell you it's nothing lack of effort. But again, if the town, if any residents are going to tie into this line, then the town would automatically be needing to take it over.
And we'll discuss that when it becomes a part.
Okay.
All right. So now that's out of the way, I would like to remind the public, Jim, tonight's topic is traffic study.
Correct, yeah. So we've, since the last meeting, we have started the peer review. We have our peer review engineers, both thank you Joe Mox Santos from BSC on the line, who can speak to traffic peer review that's in your package tonight. We also have Deputy Chief Milo on the line, who can speak to emergency services, emergency response, and we have Sergeant Rolls in the room tonight, who can certainly speak to any safety concerns, intersection concerns, crash rates, et cetera, for this evening. So, yeah, so tonight's meeting, I think if the board is minimal, would be more to just traffic. We have our engineers looking at things, all types of things, such as stormwater, grading, landscaping, et cetera. And that, I think, is the intention is to get to that in August. But tonight's real focus is traffic, to have a good, robust discussion with all the applicants in the board, but the public, and get an understanding of any outstanding concerns and needs and ways we can move forward.
So as we indicated at the last meeting, in which we just discussed this part, I would ask that questions not be repeated. The question has been asked and answered. Please do not repeat the same question. And to those in the audience and those on Zoom, we would like to rotate the questions so that we do not have same person asking same significant questions. We want to have this a robust discussion, as Jim said, and have it well shared among the public. So where's the first place to start with this study?
So, yeah, I think the applicant did do a traffic study and can certainly speak to that. And then I know Mike Santos did a good analysis of that study and can certainly go over his thoughts, and then maybe opening up to the board.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Thanks for having me. For the record, Kirsten Braun, traffic engineer with Ron Mueller Associates. I'll provide a quick overview of the traffic study that we performed, as well as I did get a chance to look at the peer review done by BSC. I have a couple of comments to that, to some of their larger outstanding items. I know we haven't had a chance yet to put anything in writing, but I'll touch on that at the end of my summary. So we did perform a full traffic study to assess impacts of the proposed redevelopment of the Bungay Brook Golf Club and do one hundred and ten townhouse units. Access to the site is proposed to remain at the approximate location of the existing driveway to the golf course. Another driveway is proposed on the western side of the site, which will provide emergency access only. Our study focused on intersections of Locust Street at Plasky Boulevard, Luke Street at West Street, and Locust Street at the existing golf course driveway. Traffic counts were conducted in September of two thousand and twenty during the weekday morning and evening peak hours. We reviewed whether the counts required any adjustments to represent annual average conditions. Based on MassDOT data, the month of September represents traffic conditions seven percent higher than normal. However, to be conservative, we didn't downwardly adjust any of the counts. Furthermore, given the traffic conditions associated with the pandemic at the time accounts were taken, MassDOT data was further reviewed to compare volumes in two thousand and nineteen to volumes in two thousand and twenty, and as such, the counts were upwardly adjusted by seventeen percent. We reviewed site distances at the existing site driveway. The existing site distances looking north and south from the driveway exceed the minimum requirements to allow safe operation. We use nationally accepted trip generation data published in the ITE manual to estimate the number of trips to be generated by the site. We compared this data to what is currently being generated by the golf course based on our September counts, and as such, we can expect about twenty additional trips during the weekday morning peak hour and eighteen additional trips during the weekday afternoon peak hour. I just would like to highlight that these increases will likely be less, since we did count the golf course during COVID. So the actual golf course volumes are likely to be higher than what we counted. At any rate, though, using these conservative assumptions, traffic volume increases are expected to be greatest on Locust Street north of the site, with seventeen to twenty-two vehicles expected during peak hours, which really represents about one additional vehicle every two and a half to three and a half minutes on Locust Street. Negligible increases in traffic are expected on Locust Street south of the site, and traffic increases during all other hours of the day are expected to be much smaller. We did perform capacity analyses at the study area intersections. The additional site traffic is expected to have minimal impacts on traffic operations, with all study area intersections operating comparable to future no build conditions under build conditions. Some delays may be felt for vehicles exiting Locust Street to Plasky Boulevard. However, ample capacity exists to accommodate any additional traffic from this development. So our traffic study was peer reviewed by BSC. We haven't, as I said, we haven't had a chance to formally respond in written form, but I will, I will talk about some of the main, main points that they had. In general, BSC did concur with most of our findings. They did have a few outstanding comments. BSC did suggest that we adjust the existing traffic counts upward by twenty-one percent versus the seventeen percent that we've used. I did briefly look into the impacts of further adjusting the existing counts and found that even with this additional increase, traffic operations under future build conditions will continue to be comparable to future, future no build conditions. BSC also commented that we should look at the latest five years of crash data versus the most recent three-year period, which we had displayed in our report. So I did look into crashes between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen, which would be the most recent five-year period on record. I found that the intersection of Plasky Boulevard experienced four crashes, the intersection of Locust Street at Plasky Boulevard, the intersection of Luke Street and West Street experienced two crashes, and the intersection of the existing site driveway in Locust Street had still not experienced any crashes, even looking into the last five years. We also looked at the segment of Locust Street between West Street and Plasky Boulevard, and found that three additional crashes had occurred, had occurred in this, in this segment of roadway. Essentially, though, what the data shows is, is there aren't any major safety issues, it seems, based on the crash data at these, any of these intersections, based on the latest five years of data, which again is between two thousand and fourteen and two thousand and eighteen. So I hope that provided a good summary of the traffic study and sorted out, and, you know, address some of the major, more major comments from the peer review. I'm available to answer any more specific questions the board might have.
Thank you very much. Before we have any questions, I think you'd like to hear from our peer review.
Sure. My name's Michael Santos. I'm a registered civil engineer in Massachusetts with the BSC Group. My task was to conduct the peer review of the traffic study, which Kirsten just discussed. I also reviewed the site plans dated April twenty-second, prepared by Land Design Collaborative. You know, the site plans related to transportation and the traffic elements. So, you know, we're tasked with doing a review of both of these documents to provide a projective, objective evaluation of the study and to ensure that it conforms with professional standards. Our review methodology, our review looks at the methodology that was used in the traffic study, and, you know, that includes how they collected data, including traffic counts, review of safety conditions and crash history, reviewing vehicular speeds along Locust Street, site distance, trip generation and trip distribution, the traffic operations analysis that was prepared, and then ultimately reviewing to make sure that the impacts that they're reporting are accurate and to determine if there's enough capacity on the roadway for, to handle the project. As Kirsten just discussed, the traffic study in general, you know, we're in concurrence with most of the findings of the traffic study. I didn't, you know, we just submitted this on July seventh, so there, we haven't had the opportunity to discuss our findings with the town or the applicant. But I'll just go over, over our review. In general, we find that the methodology is consistent with the requirements of County Bellingham and Mass DOT. So what they did is they conducted traffic counts in two thousand and twenty, which obviously were, you know, lower due to the ongoing pandemic. Typically, you apply adjustment, adjustments to those accounts. The applicant did provide adjustments to, to account for the lower traffic counts last year. As Kirsten noted, they used a seventeen percent adjustment factor to bump up the volumes. I thought the, you know, looking out at the data that they provided, I thought the, the correct adjustment factor would be twenty-one percent. Again, it's the four percent difference, so it's not, not a huge difference and not going to make a major impact on any of the findings of the study. Again, the crash evaluation they provided is three years of crash data, which is, is the minimum that MassDOT requires. Typically, you know, we'd like to see five years just for a more complete view of the crash history. You know, and again, there weren't too many crashes, as Kirsten said, there were four crashes at the northern intersection on Locust Street at Plasky Boulevard and two at Luke Street. You know, we went into the MassDOT database and verified that that's accurate. There was an additional three crashes on Locust Street. So again, you know, we don't believe that there are any major safety issues on Locust Street that need to be addressed or that will be impacted by the project. You know, we do, we do recognize that Locust Street is, it is a narrow roadway. I did take a site visit down there and noted that the roadway would curb to curb, or, you know, edge of pavement to edge of pavement is around, and it varies, but it can go from twenty to twenty-one feet with, you know, ten to ten and a half foot lanes. So it is, it is a narrower roadway. But again, we don't believe that there are any major, major safety deficiencies that we saw. They did provide an evaluation of site distance at the main driveway on Locust Street. And again, this is based on criteria published by the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials and what they call the Green Book. So essentially, they provide the bare minimum requirements, which is the stopping site distance. You know, how, how much distance does a vehicle need, need to stop, to come to a complete stop as if they see an object or a person in the roadway? There is another recommended guidelines called intersection site distance, which gives you a little bit of a higher threshold, you know, more of a distance requirement. It's, it's a guideline. It's not required, but it's, it's something that we would like to see. They noted that they, they do have appropriate stopping site distance north and south of the driveway. They noted that they, they do have appropriate stopping site distance north and south of the driveway. We did go out there and verify that their measurements were accurate. I did, I did see that there was some vegetation north of the site. On the west side of Locust Street. I'm not sure if that's on the site or if it's on the adjacent property. But I, what I had asked for is, is to see if, you know, if we were able to remove or trim back that vegetation, if we could get better sight lines at the driveway. I think, you know, based on my site visit, that was the, that was the major, the major obstacle to providing additional site distance north of the driveway. So you know, we asked the applicant to go, to provide an additional evaluation to see if we can get any more site distance. And create a safer situation at the driveway. And, you know, I, I think that they will, you know, requesting that they provide that in their follow-up letter. And again, we looked at how they did their trip generation. They used IT data from ITE to generate the, the estimated number of trips for the project. Again, this is based on 110 units. You know, what they provided was, was accurate. You know, we, we have no, no other comments on that. We do note that there will be some, some increases when compared to the golf course. You know, as Kirsten said, these increases are, you know, I think it was 18 to 20 trips during the peak hours. So that's, you know, as she said, it's a one trip every two to three minutes or so. So, you know, we don't have any further comments on that either. We did look at the traffic operations analysis at the two primary intersections on Locust Street, at Plasky Boulevard and West Street. Again, you know, Locust Street's a pretty low volume road and there is, you know, just from our observations and a review of the analysis, there is capacity to handle these additional trips. We don't think that there are any major capacity issues at either intersection. One of, you know, one of the, the other parts of our review is related to the site plan. So we did take a look at the site plan. I'm not sure how, how advanced it is. But one of our, you know, a few of our major comments related to that are we noted that there were no, no sidewalks provided on any of the interior roadways to the site. And they are providing a common green with pedestrian walkways that lead out to the roadway. So we're requesting that the applicant look to see if they can install sidewalks on at least one side of the, the interior roadways. You know, I understand that there's no sidewalks on Locust Street, but since there's 110 units, you know, I don't know how many residents they expect there, but at two bedrooms per unit, I would expect at least, you know, 220 people to be living there, probably, probably more than that. So there, there should be some decent pedestrian activity through the site. So we're, we're asking them to you know, install some, some sidewalks on the site. Another thing that we had asked for is just to describe how visitor parking will be handled, whether people will be able to park on the street. You know, right now, the internal circulating, the internal roadway is consisted two 11-foot lanes and a five-foot bike lane as shown on the plans. You know, we agree with the bike lane. I think that's great, but we think that there should be some additional pedestrian facilities that is separate from the roadway. You know, separate at least by, by a raised curb. The other thing that we did ask for is that the applicant develop transportation demand management measures. Which help reduce the, help reduce the number of single occupancy trips on the site. You know, the, based on where this is located, it might be, it might be difficult, but I think that there are probably some measures that they can, that they can provide and commit to. Whether it's, you know, I don't, there's not a lot of transit around here, but we're asking for them and we can work with them to come up with, with appropriate measures for that. So that's, you know, that's the general, general breakdown of our review. Again, I think the biggest thing is that, that I found was just on the site, providing some, some additional information related to pedestrian facilities, deliveries and visitor parking. We also noted that there is a, they are showing an emergency access that leads out to Reservoir, Reservoir Drive. You know, based on where the, the existing fire station is, I took a look at, you know, potential response times. I think that, that access, that access point can improve response times by about, you know, one to two minutes. Based on where the, the existing fire station is. But that's, you know, that's something that should be further reviewed with, with the fire department and with the town. You know, as it's designed, I'm not too concerned with traffic using it as long as they can design it to dissuade vehicles or prohibit vehicles from using that, that driveway. So thank you and here for any questions.
Thank you very much. Jim, do you have any questions?
No, none of them.
Ryan?
I guess a question for Jim. Do you think it's reasonable or appropriate factor in the Bondi theoretical development that's going in?
Yeah, so, I mean, I know it's been conceptual for a very long time, but there's nothing really before the town in terms of a concrete plan. It can be difficult to incorporate that in with this, obviously. Vice versa, if that were to have a materializing incorporating these guys' counts.
I'm fine for now. I'll wait to see some of the responses back. I understand this letter from our peer review, you know, 73. It's not fair to ask for a full response. It just seemed like there's enough here that, like, you're back. Lynch?
I have nothing.
Just maybe a question. I don't know if this is the time to discuss it. I don't know if there is any thoughts with construction-based traffic management. You know, you know, Lucas and Luke and Locust Street are pretty narrow, so large construction vehicles going both ways don't work too well.
Yeah, I think typically, once this, this plan starts evolving some. The applicant typically will provide a graph split and a, a management plan, just as you detailed, that starts to outline, you know, what, what are the hours, where, where is going to be the entrance, where the fenced-in gate will be, all that, all that kind of stuff. But you're right, that's definitely a necessary. You see, the deputy on, I don't know if you want to.
Yeah, I'll get to my question. Mike, I have a couple of questions. You indicated, and I think you agree with the applicants. It's come down to 500 daily trips. 20 trips during the weekday morning peak hours, 18 during the weekday evening peak hours. We do not have an evaluation of Saturdays and Sundays. Would you label that significant minor, moderate increase in traffic?
It's, I, I would, I would say it's a minor increase in traffic during, during the peak hours. You know, the increase, how Kirsten described it perfectly, and this is how I would describe it as well, is you know, an increase of 20 vehicles per hour is one every three minutes. You know, it, it is, it is an increase in traffic, but if you stand there and watch, you know, for vehicles, that you're probably not going to notice one additional vehicle every three minutes. So I, I would say it's a, it's a, it's a minor increase, but, but it is an increase.
Do you have any way of determining, and I think the answer may be no. But what the peak hours, the peak traffic was during 2018 or 2019 during the golf season, how that compares?
Can you repeat the question? Is it, are you asking if, if?
Right now, with the increase in crap.
Yep.
Are we able to correlate to what, what might have happened in the past during, you know, the peak golf season?
I think you would need counts at the driveway during 2018 or 2019. And, you know, it's just been my experience, I think that last year. I, I don't know if the golf courses were shut down or if they had lower usage rates, but if, if there was more activity on the golf courses back in 2019 and 2018 than there were last year, then those the increases would be lower. So essentially, you know, the golf course would be generating more traffic than what they had counted.
Is it fair to assume this will be an over 55 community? A lot of the traffic, I know we looked at peak hours in the evening, peak hours in the morning. But realistically, this may be spread out more entirely over the day, based on being over 55.
This one won't be over 55, but I think you got the Bondi set.
No, no, I don't. I thought they're supposed to be.
No, this, this one is.
Their, their market is two bedrooms, correct?
It's, it's, it might be.
Yes.
It's not restricted to over 55.
Okay.
That is 50% of our target market.
Okay, okay. Thank you for clarifying. All right, so that may spread the traffic out.
Absolutely.
During the day. If basically having two bedrooms, you're decreasing your market for people having, you know, a three-bedroom house, a four-bedroom house. And according to traffic impact will be reduced.
Again, that's, we, we anticipate that it to be about 50% of our market.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I appreciate it. So Deputy Chief here. Could you talk about the need for a what has been referred to as a second means of egress? I think more applicably, as we call, emergency exit, emergency egress.
Sure. Good evening. It's Deputy Fire Chief Chris Milo. With that project and with all the projects that we have going on similar to this. We do have a need for a second means of either entry for emergency vehicles or exit for emergency vehicles. This became really evident in the fire that was recently had over in Franklin, at Franklin Crossing. An older development with condominiums, once the fire started and the vehicles, the fire apparatus got there. It pretty much limited our entrance and created a very big problem for getting other apparatus in. Having two means of egress and entrance allows us to get emergency vehicles out as well as the public out if they need to evacuate or to have a second means to get in and out if there is some type of an emergency in that entrance area. And also for us to get emergency vehicles in. So I think the, the need is there. Having it in a area off of reservoir gives us a entirely different access point. So it helps us out so that we don't have that same people coming up Locust Street or apparatus coming up Locust Street and having that same problem with vehicles backing up in there. So the, the original plan of having that emergency exit on Locust, on reservoir is what we'd like to see.
I have another question for you. How critical? I, I believe this being a risk management, I want to hear. How critical is the timeframe of saving one to two minutes?
It's, it is critical, though I don't think that, that's going to be a primary entrance. So I think that you're going to find that, that the time of saving, there's going to be, my understanding is that it's going to be gated. So that would probably, you know, have that as not a primary way to get in. More so, it's, it's in that emergency case where we needed to get in or get people out of there and that the entrance was blocked for some reason, whether it's fire apparatus or crash or whatever.
And I apologize, actually, I'll have one more question. I have one more.
Okay.
Conceptually, do you agree that it should refer to as emergency access egress? As opposed to a second means of entrance egress? This is only the use for emergencies, correct?
That was my understanding. That would be emergency use only. It would be a locked gate that we would have access of, the fire department would have key and access to that if we needed it.
And Jim, that could be outlined in the agreements we have.
Yeah, certainly. And we can certainly talk to the applicant about some sort of use cases of some kind as well.
So they cannot be opened up for public use?
Right.
I know that was a concern that was raised by the public at the last meeting. Any more questions from the board? I'd like to open up to the public. I want to remind you that tonight is our traffic study only. Jim, who do you see that has questions out there?
I did see a hand or two. They look like they've gone down. Does anybody who might have unmuted and asked a question?
Yeah, Jim, I'm sorry. I was cutting in and out. I was bringing my kid home from karate and everything. Real quick, when you said reservoir access, you said you were going to try to write something in there that we, it wouldn't be allowed to be blown open in the future? Is that something we try to write into the language?
Right. So yeah, I think, I think the discussion right now with the board is, yes, not only in the decision, but some sort of perhaps deed restriction of some kind, you know, something that gives us teeth that it wouldn't be any kind of public access in the future.
Okay, thank you.
So that was raised by a lot of neighbors. And we were pretty clear in that at our last meeting. I don't know if you participated or not.
Yes, sir, I did.
What's also clear was the, right now, there's a cul-de-sac at the end of Reservoir Road. And the assumption was it would be straight cut through on Reservoir Road. Going up and down a significant incline. And we've talked with the applicant and we've moved the emergency access to the right of the cul-de-sac. And the intent is to have it blend in with the neighborhood and to make it look like a one and a half, one, one and a half with driveway. Certainly not, you know, enough for a fire truck to get through. And it will blend in with the neighborhood. We'll try to make it as unobtrusive for your neighborhood as possible, but still to meet its purpose. So again, the goal is to blend it in as best we can and to have, I don't know if it's covenants or deeds, so that it cannot be opened up to the general public.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions out there, Jim? Yeah, I just want to get, Sergeant Rolls, you already put in the traffic study and when you first up this evening?
I, I practiced that show there and we had a meeting. The company now needs time, definitely time, it's inside the block, right away. You're going to have to sit there and watch. Playing and to be out there in the world of snowbanks, you need a firm side, side part. Even Locust Street sidewalks, sidewalks, you're brave that you're people. It's a beautiful road to walk there.
Anything else you want to add?
Site distances, but I went up there with the site.
Okay.
The accidents, I did an accident study, you know, and the power, the power on computer. Maybe the sign at the end of Locust Street for the ball, talks about the ball for us.
Yes.
We can take that sign out. Push back that brush.
Okay. So for the applicant, there will be two areas where we need to de-vegetate. The area he just mentioned and also outlined in item number four in the BSC report. Giving you a clear and 35 feet north view. As opposed to two and 80 feet. I think that's outlined in the report.
And I have one more?
Absolutely, sir.
Was talking about the access road. That access road is very important. There was a crash in front of us, like Bellwood.
Yes.
We had one at Bellwood, it worked out great. We had an incident in Bellwood a few years ago where we had to get anybody back.
Yep, and it worked. Okay.
And now we just with the one entrance and one exit. Not good enough, quiet enough.
And just for the public viewing and the people here tonight. That Bellwood develop was a long time coming, based on the second means of uh. Yes. Yes. But in, in the end, it turns out to be the correct decision, based on what happened.
Okay, I mean, there's an accident and there will be accidents. And we can't get in and get out and if there's multiple falls there or somebody's having a heart attack, restful fall or. And there's an accident in the intersection, it's not in the chat, we have a lot of accidents.
Yep. Anything else you wanna mention? Sure, thank you very much, appreciate your time.
That's one question for the, for the chief, that other entrance you were talking about, was that Bellaski and Locust for the golf sign was?
Yes.
Okay.
I just want to, one input, sir, I think the um, fall push will likely take it down after the season thing, right?
I'm sure.
Probably we wanted to take it down the next week or two. I'm sure I, I'd hear them, I would hear from them.
So the treatment is on Bellaski or is on, on Locust?
Uh, on our last. Right, right on, on the corner.
Okay.
Um, Jim, so in terms of management of the, the emergency access, particularly the snow. The association would be responsible for filing it onsite, but one of those, uh. There're gonna be two plows running like this and leaving a pile of fill or have a. It'll be one plow going down reservoir, I think, as it, as it is today, and yeah, there's a gate there now. Uh, it probably, I, I was betting it gets blocked in time to pan, there was certain. Some markers or identifiers for EPW that would plow and leave some, some access. Otherwise, I'm sure they're gonna hear from Sergeant Rolls and others that it needs to get cleared.
Would the association be responsible for an outside of the gate?
Certainly can be discussed with, with the applicant and putting in an HLA document. The board typically reviews the, you know, the, uh, the draft HLA, um, and obviously those can get amended over time, but. Um, we can, we can think about some language in that kind of decision, so.
Jim, anything else here from the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Walter Callahan and I live on Redwood Drive. Uh, question is, uh, for that access, um, emergency access, what? How, uh, what will affect, will the grade of uh, the road be affected? By uh, obviously allowing vehicles to go down that what is now an existing steep grade. Uh, into the downforce from that point. Um, I, I can't imagine if that's opened up. That a vehicle, particularly uh, emergency vehicle, we're gonna be able to go down that very steep grade, so the assumption is something else we done. Will it affect actually reservoir drive itself?
Sir, the last meeting, what we discussed, that downgrade. And I think the applicant, the applicant agrees, you're planning to shift that to the right of the cul-de-sac. To reduce that, to make it a smoother grade, leaving um, Reservoir Road into the development. So you'll not be going down that steep hill. The people, can you describe what you're planning to do?
The way it's designed right now, it is coming off the center of, of, of a reservoir and we're not, we're not modifying reservoir at all. We're tying into the existing grade of, in the reservoir and the driveway kind of loops around, comes back, so we're creating. A longer run which would reduce the amount of uh, the steepness of the slope. So I think it's, I think it's designed at like five percent grade, which is not very steep at all.
So it's not gonna be the current condition that's there?
No, no, it'll be, there'll be a little bit of fill and it'll be, you know, like it'll kind of reenter down the slope, so it'll create a longer. And the radius is wide enough where emergency vehicles can certainly get down there.
And you'll still try to blend that into the neighborhood.
Yes.
And if you need to add flag things or.
Yes.
Whatever has to be done, I also assume um, they remain pulling down the nets better there?
Yeah, I think that's the plan, yeah.
And the poles. Jim, anyone else on the public?
Uh, not at this time, no.
What is the next step?
So, let's see, so I know uh, the guys at BSC are working feverishly on stormwater and other items. I believe uh, they're prepared to, to discuss at our next meeting, August twelfth.
Okay.
Those items, so uh.
Oh, quite one question on that, um, does the conversation with the devices or products. Effect any of that stormwater stuff? And would you be in a position that date to talk about it?
It shouldn't affect stormwater. No, it shouldn't affect.
Locations of basements.
I'll move to continue the hearing until August twelfth revelation.
Yes, obviously.
And that'll be a one topic discussion, right?
Maybe, maybe two if we can get sewer wrapped up, but uh, but yes, stormwater would be the ideal topic.
Finalizing responses to this. As well as hopefully getting a response from the public. So then potentially three. We have a second?
A second.
All things to continuance to our August meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the motion passes to you.
Thank you, I see, Brad.
Um, Jim, before you want to ask a lady anything, just ask for a two-minute break.
You like a little bit longer of a minute now, huh? Just a smidge. You keep Captain in mind, woman? Yeah, good. He's allowed to talk.
I was doing the commute for about ten weeks before that, which was miserable.
I'm far up.
So the office is in Manchester, right downtown, it's about an hour, twenty minutes. Some people do it and also, it's been much worse than right in Austin. Austin does hit, I, so. My wife's in Dell and they made a full remote, so, or at least her crew is full. Realized we've been driving by the town, we just fought on our way to skiing for the past however many years.
So, could believe. Are you doing the same stuff up there?
Yeah.
Is it very different?
They have town zone ordinances, not bylaws, so I feel like I trip up on little words and stuff like that, but generally the laws are the same. I actually made that comment, one of the friends I work with, that you get going on your answer a lot, they said it's basically just Massachusetts, it's late, you'll figure it out. Yeah, it's, still have a bunch of ongoing projects down here, so. Zoom was nice, but dirt, dirt lawyers go to where the job is, so. Get to shore gravel plans and asphalt plans and whatever.
Little rainy.
Yeah, a little wet.
Yeah, kind of a bummer.
Nice, Rock Memorial, it gets rained out the fourth.
I couldn't do that.
I was just gonna say that they get their retention basis figured out. Certainly presented after them for a few meetings, but I expect two and a half hours before.
Uh, the next item on the agenda this evening is a continued public hearing for asphalt engineering. The applicant owner of Farm Street Properties Management LLC proposes to amend the development plan decision. The special permit decision bid in May twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen. In regards to crushing of asphalt on one ninety Farm Street. Jim, can you bring this up to speed on what we're standing on here?
Sure, so at the last meeting, uh, the applicant and the board uh discussed a continuation to, to uh. Give the applicant more time to uh, provide information regarding uh, two main things really sound in traffic. Uh, I know you have a sound analysis uh, in your package as well as uh. Please applicants have reached out to the board about uh, reviewing uh, the crushing operation. Uh, and I know their attorneys here this evening who may be able to give us more information. You also have an email from Aaron Landry, uh, one of the owners of Fast One Engineering that uh, discussed more of their request.
Sure, full show.
Thank you, uh, for the record, Eli Langham from Premier Piper, Eggelston and Kramer. I'm joined by the owners of the property and also asphalt engineering, Aaron Landry and Nathan Morland. Uh, I think Jim's synopsis of the May meeting is correct that. I think Mr. Salisbury summed it up nicely saying, we have a couple mysteries to solve regarding sound and traffic, so. We've taken some time, um. I, I know that there were some concerns that coming in and going from the allowed twenty days to a number that was bandied around for a hundred days. Caused the board some concern, because obviously that is a five-fold increase in allowable days. But uh, we, as the applicant, wanted to take some time to discuss. Why that's not really as big a change to the neighborhood in current operation as maybe it appears. Uh, I think it probably makes sense to start with the sound aspects of that. We did submit a updated traffic study showing that at the corners of the property in various locations. That there were none of the uh, locations where the sound was measured. Where there was going to be an issue with any compliance with any of the local regulations regarding sound. And then to that effect, we did also uh, invite the board to, to the site and. Mr. Divine was able to come out and visit while the operation was at full speed. I was there as well, I think it was interesting to see that as walked out to the site, you get screening on the woods on both sides. Entrance by one sort of narrow access road, so it's not a whole. It, it's really well screened from the front operation piece and back on the fifteen acres. Surrounded by trees, but that as you turn the corner in, you can hear the machine some as you get close. Obviously, it's a, it's a large machine that's a, for those of you keeping track, it's a Sandbit Q one, QI three forty-one. And it's a big self-driven crusher, but that as you walk back out from the property where you can no longer see it, you actually hear four ninety-five. More than you can hear the machine operating. And then, um, as was discussed at the May meeting, I think it's worth noting that there haven't been any complaints from any of the neighbors. At all about the sound of this, or rightly brought up the fact that people's homes are their castles and that. If Saturday morning is hearing a crushing machine, the applicant wouldn't have liked that, I wouldn't like that, the neighbors wouldn't like that. But no one has raised that issue, which I think is fairly telling. That over the few years, they've been allowed to do this for the twenty days, there haven't been complaints whatsoever. So, I think. As far as there are outstanding questions about sound, it might make sense to delve into those now before we discuss traffic. Or I can certainly discuss traffic, however, the board's pleasure.
You, you have a question, we're gonna have some comments afterwards.
Okay.
So we're gonna hold up on those.
So, again, traffic in Bellingham and Patrion Antonos taught me one thing. And instead of town situated less than thirty miles from you, and in two different directions, people are gonna wanna be there and. There's traffic that's related to every project that you've talked about and. We wanna make sure that as part of this application, the board gains to give them additional crushing grades. That they're not a cause of additional traffic or additional hazards or problems with traffic. So to that effect, we crunched some numbers to try to get the averages because I think that there was. Um, it was a little bit too speculative for the board's liking at the May meeting. I did uh, print out my, my notes that I've scratched out here and typed up for you, if you'd like to be able to follow along. Just give it to the board.
That's fine.
Again, if I were great at math, I would have been an engineer, not a land use attorney, so if you have any questions on that, we can certainly. Discuss, but the general gist for, for those watching from home and just go over it with the board. Uh, the crusher is capable of approximately a hundred and twenty-five tons per operational hour. The applicant is allowed to use the crusher from seven to seven, but. By what it takes to set up the machine, what it takes to move the piles, various maintenance and just. Lunchtime cooldown breaks, et cetera, it ends up being about eight hours per day where the machine is used. And uh, right now, because they have the twenty loud days, we've really seen. It doesn't make sense to not use the machine at about its full capacity, so they've been doing about a thousand tons a day. Based on these numbers, and I think if there were more days, maybe there wouldn't be as big a need to push it as hard as it can. But I think that that shows you a pretty good estimate for what the high numbers will be. Um, and then the other number here that we've taken as sort of a constant. Is that triaxle dump trucks, which seem to be the industry standard here, can hold about twenty-four uh, tons. Alright, not that. But, one thing that was unclear to the board at the May meeting was when the applicant can be using the crusher. And it's outgoing operations and that there are cold weeks where there just really is no good sense to run the crusher. Because there's not the need for the subbase build that the crusher creates. Uh, so it makes sense to have those weeks off, so we've estimated somewhat conservatively that about forty-one weeks a year, you could be crushing here. Uh, and then taken by the hundred days that we were requesting, which is a number again, that was. Bandied about and is not a line in the sand, but I do think is a fairly reasonable quest from the applicant that we hope. Might have some traction with the board, it's again, not requesting cart wash, we understand the board's considerations on that, that. It is kind of in, at least on paper and on. That it is kind of an, at least on paper, an ugly, noisy, dirty use. Well, in reality, it's a very well-contained, well-working system. But we don't, we don't want to request more than the board might be able to be comfortable with granting. So as we get down to the brass tacks on the number here, it's basically if asphalt engineering is doing a big day, they use about 450 tons of gravel, which we would hope would be what is created by this machine. If they do not have that, they either need to buy it offsite and go straight to the job site. Or as was discussed, buy it offsite at times when they're a little bit slower with their truckloads because rain days, et cetera. And then stockpile it onsite so they can move it. So if they're creating more gravel through those 100 extra days, it's the benefit of their recycling of product stripped asphalt that has no real benefit to anyone. But through this and the crushing operation can be reused. So that is why they do have a recycling permit for this. But it also alleviates those truck trips from offsite to bring it in. So you come out, you've seen my math and certainly willing to discuss the numbers. But it comes out almost as a wash in terms of trucks in or out because the bottom line is that you need the correct amount of subbase for a residential driveway or commercial lot. And that gravel has to come from somewhere. So here, if they have the opportunity to fill that, they're, they're taking one link out of that chain. And then I know that the board had some concerns about the idea that outside operators would be coming into the site. And again, as Aaron mentioned last meeting, they're, through their permits, every, every spec on that site, they have to know where it came from because of pollution regulations. And that's something I think we've all learned some about. But the other thing about that is that these are vendors that have been vetted by asphalt engineering and the property owning entity. And they're unwilling to put their reputation and licenses at risk, put their business at risk by having these people, A, bring in dirty material. But also, this is a situation where if we want to have restrictions and would happily discuss conditions with the board, if we find out that some of these people are driving in a way that doesn't comply with what the town requires, that they don't drive away the asphalt engineering trucks. Do, you commented on their good management practices and that they try to keep a clean site, keep the drivers being safe and reasonable and good citizens. If other outside companies aren't doing that, we're willing to ban them from the site entirely. So we're willing to show our commitment to being good corporate citizens and do whatever is necessary so that, A, this business that's doing a good service in recycling this material for use on its sites can then make money, it costs less to do the gravel recycling operation than to bring it in, truck it in, buy it at bulk elsewhere. But also, it's critically important that they remain a good citizen of the town of Bellingham.
Yes.
Happy to answer any question, also the applicants for any of the.
I'll be sorry, turn it over to the board. I'd like to have a discussion here. And that's okay, of course. I'd like to start the genesis of this whole process. Now, there's a document dated November 5th, 2015, in which the applicant was cited for having a a cease and desist order for 161, 187 McKinnon Street, for quote unquote, a large-scale asphalt. This letter was McKinnon Street brought up regarding the violation of zoning bylaws and was signed by Jim Cox. So I hope you have an opportunity as someone to read that letter. I also hope you have an opportunity to read the request on May 25th, 2017, regarding the development plan, storm water intervention permit decision, the Sinigoro permit decision, and the bulk storage permit decision. These decisions outline specific determinations and decisions agreed to by both parties involved. We've worked with asphalt engineering in various boards in the town, elected officials, and departments to work with them. They've been in this area for over 15 years. If you go on their website, the Better Business Bureau promotes their business practices. And we find that they're very good neighbors. This process on Farm Street dealt with, we zoned function, we left their portion still industrial, everything around them was changed. Jim, what was the process? That lot was somewhat carved out.
Yeah, so there was a large area of property that we worked with the landowners. You were that one, correct?
And, you know, we worked with the applicant during several continuums to get this done. So it was, you know, a good working relationship. In regards to the conditions they want to change, condition number two of the bulk storage and condition number eight of the initial development plan. Initially, they requested to increase from 20 days to 365 days, running from 6:30 to 7:30 P.M. This was viewed by the applicant as a minimal change as the max pile of storage will not change from the 24,000 tons based on the storm water eventual requirements. They also indicated this material we trucked in and added to the midway gravel pit. So they have material to use and sell. One indicate, I do not believe, Jim, do they have a permit to sell products?
The permits that are before you are for, oh, it's for bulk storage and material and I don't know the specific uses, but I don't believe retail sales was one of them.
So in the process of getting to this point, they indicated to us that material would come in in three triaxle vehicles, usually at the end of the day, that they could not return to the aggregate facility. That was what they would be storing and crushing. They did not mention reclaimed asphalt at any point in time. Just that asphalt they had leftover, they could not use from the end of the day, would be piled up and crushed. They also indicated on the application on May 25th, they now quote, "These changes keep the site still completely within the performance requirements and conditions of the town bylaws and subscribe to the development and state water intervention program." Well, it's not consistent with their request. If everything was within the bylaws, they wouldn't make them the request, you follow me? The request goes beyond the scope of the bylaws. On the June 28th request, they scaled it back from 20 days to 100 days per year. They changed the hours since, I believe, 7:00 P.M., I'm sorry, 7:00 A.M. to 7:00 P.M. While the max of 100 days and the maximum width and height of the piles first referred to, not to be wrong here, as more than one pile. I've often backed, I don't know how many piles they have. If it's more than one pile, that's fine. But the way they explained to us at the beginning, this was a small pile that would accumulate at the end of the day and crush. Which leftover material that they have and could not use.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'm sorry to interrupt, if I could speak to the two piles, it's that one is the raw material and one is the crushing.
It could not be materially that way or?
No, so the original pile, and there was in the plans presented, actually aerial view showing the one and a half acre by 30 feet tall. And that is all written in. So it wasn't presented as a small pile, it was presented as an acre and a half by 30.
That's fine, okay, that's.
Sure, and yes, so the pile that we're actually dumping in is one singular pile.
Okay.
When the material is crushed, is moved into a recycled asphalt pile.
Okay. And then they would get the company production at 100,000 tons of reprocessed asphalt per year. They also indicated that they were to have the applicant, the additional trucking location potential for outside predetermined vendors, bulk fire, no small landscapers, no regulations of compliance, would equate to less than an average of 0.8 trash load. Okay, and I'll get back to that in a minute. The applicant also indicated the question allow for future growth with an additional trucking traffic as would be absorbed some of the 8.8 per hour 0.8 per hour and vice versa, given the reductions we need. We know these are all averages, but we're in industry that things vary. I still wouldn't need to be explaining the vice versa portion of it and how they can solve that. I need a future clarification on that. And then in that document, they agree that, let me quote, "We agree with the board, the cap of 100 days protection protects both parts." If you refer to the minutes from the May 13 meeting, the board did not agree with them.
No, I.
But that was outlined in her request, wouldn't you agree?
Understood, and I, I came to this proceeding a little bit after this June letter had been sent to the board. So I think there may be some looser language than maybe I would have sent in the letter to you in terms of these things. But again, it is not our intention to deceive or hide the ball in any way on this. I think it might just be a mistake.
Okay, but again, it's documents that are public, so, all right? It's not in the minutes that are also public. At this point, I'll turn it over to questions.
Yeah, when you first came to us, I firstly, I thought we were just helping you out because you were stuck with those asphalt at the end of the day and plant was closed. I'm pretty much sure now you can actually cook, you can actually load that up the next day and take that product to them for free and dump it in their recycling.
If it's clean asphalt, yes.
Exactly. So there was really, I don't know, nothing, really is no need for grinding this material. You could have just taken it to there.
So the need for this is still that for any of these jobs, they need to build gravel. And any paid job would need the subbase gravel material, so.
I understand that, but what? If I would never in my wildest dreams back then, when I said you could crush, ever think that you want to take this in with full-blown sales business and sell this product, but you want to crush it onsite in Bellingham and contaminate the groundwater? You can't tell me this is not a hazardous material.
It's not, and that was all part of our original.
So why do you, why do you have to be regulated with the DEP?
So the DEP is based on what the town regulations, so part of why we're back in front of you is your max crushing days equates to a maximum amount of material that we can make. So they want to regulate, if they, if they know the number of crushing days, they're regulating how much material you're bringing in, therefore how much material is coming out. We, they can't go against what the town said of 20 days.
You can rotate that pile all day long and keep the same volume.
Yes.
Right, so you really don't need an increase.
We do because of what it takes to make the material. If we can only crush 20 days, that's like 20,000 tons a year.
But you, what is the ratio where you take that product and mix it with this stuff?
Oh, you don't mix anything. You don't mix anything, you're making, you're making the full product with the asphalt.
So you're telling me, all right, the water runoff from that does not contaminate the soil whatsoever?
Absolutely.
You've done environmental study on that?
Yes, absolutely, sir. All of that was done before you would approve the original plan, yes.
You see environmental study done?
Yes.
I know, it's all, but you know, it was four years ago.
Yes, and that, and therefore, right, storing of the material and crushing material, whether it's 20 days or 100 days, the storm water implication is the same because the maximum pile is staying the same. It's just how often you're making the material.
But I, I never thought that you would turn this into a business that I don't believe you permitted for a sale.
We have not sold any material.
Right, but that is your intent.
Well, I mean, asphalt engineering is a separate company, so it would certainly be beneficial for the entities to be able to sell the material.
You need to re-permit for that then.
Whatever the regulations would be, I think, for selling material.
This, again, isn't something that I had looked into in terms of what permits they had for that specific aspect. And I, I don't want to take a guess for the board. So this is something I certainly would be willing to do more research. And we are, again, as part of being good corporate citizens, willing to do what's necessary to make sure we're proper.
Because that's what I'm uncomfortable with. I'm comfortable with you bringing in, having other vendors bringing in products, and who knows where that site that came from? That could be totally contaminated to begin with. And that, that would reach into my ground law. And then the volume, I don't think you need an increase in the volume in a tonnage because I think you can rotate that all day long. And the sales side, I'm not down for you opening up a full-time recycling business. That's not what my intent was to have you crush that stuff in the beginning.
I'm not sure I understand the second piece of your answer in terms of you can keep the, the operation running all the time.
The tonnage, so I mean, you bring three trucks in, you have all three trucks out, the tonnage stays the same.
The 24,000 tons. If you're bringing 3,000, I'll treat that.
Exactly.
It doesn't change in the day lengths.
No, that's, that's, that's correct, but obviously we're capped by the number of days. So that there's, you, you can't make the pile bigger than what was allowed for stormwater.
Yep.
And if you can't do anything with that pile, and we are, we can't bring more material in. So there is a cap there. You know, we, we can't make the pile just grow infinitely until those 20 days that we're currently permitted for. At which point, if we were, we can't really run the machine harder than we can, again, we discussed with the board. It's almost a quarter million, three quarters million dollar machine. If, if you have it for the couple of weeks, the 20 days that it's rented, you use it about as hard as you can because that's the economics of the thing. So I, I'm not really sure how we can say that it's not capped by the days. If the pile can't grow any bigger, we get stuck and the gravel has to, the subbase gravel, which they can either make to then use or get from somewhere else, that overall number doesn't change except that as the business expands and it can more residential and commercial jobs, there's more of a need for this product.
You can only do 1,000 tons a day, right? And you've got 24,000 tons there, is that correct?
So we can do 1,000 tons a day, cap 20 days a year, it's 20,000 tons a year we produce.
All right, so you need 24 to clean that up. The 24,000 that you've got at 1,000.
Right now, I'm maxed out, right?
I've become fluent in giving you an extra 20 days, which is 100% increase in that business. And that would take care of your downtime, when you rain, that, you know, and maybe machinery that goes down on you there. But that would clean that, and that would give you plenty of time to recycle that.
So, well, again, we understand that this is a collaborative process. And I don't want to certainly act like I'm just rejecting out of hand a generous offer from the town. Or it sounds great in most industries to say, okay, we go up 100%. It's a tremendous increase.
Yeah, just give me my.
I understand that, and I promise I will try to get to the point for you. But for each of these applications to DEP, it's $11,000 to apply for the change. So if you offer them an extra 20, which doesn't get to their needs, it's an $11,000 to bring the application to get that. Coupled with it requires a full new engineered site plan. So there's engineering costs in all of this, there's administrative costs in all of this. So where right now, at the 20 days, I realize that at the periphery, there are some things that we need to clean up in terms of permitting. But the 20 days haven't been the issue where there's no sound complaints and there haven't been complaints about the traffic from this beyond the fact that there's, there's traffic in Bellingham all over. And that's, yeah, we have to be incredibly conscious of. So if we take what again is a generous, and I know it's not an offer, but a generous sort of proposal to double this, it puts them in a spot where it, it doesn't really solve the problem. And if then we have the 40 and we have to come back because there's still not been any issues at the town level regarding noise or traffic, it's $11,000 right out of pocket immediately, coupled with more engineering costs and more administrative costs. So somewhat on faith, I would hope that the board could consider going a bit further than that. And again, there, there may need to be conditions on various other aspects of this. We know, keep coming back to both traffic and sound, if there's ways that additional mitigation needs to happen. Certainly that we have budget, that if additional signs on Farm Street need to be printed in the neighborhood or there's something like that, or some way that the town thinks that from this location, we can do some mitigation. Really, there's, there's some of that money that could be used hopefully and not continuously bringing repeat petitions to the DEP. So the offer to double is, is certainly generous. But I'm hoping that we could go a little farther than that on the fact that while there are things in the permitting that we certainly now, having been brought to our attention by the chairman, we will work to clean up on this particular. we will work to clean up on this particular ask. I hope that there's maybe a willingness to go a bit further.
Jimmy, what did that period you come up with, the chemicals that were in the product?
Yeah, we can pull up every report. There was a report submitted, and I think it was actually some of our CFP, right? There was some, some documents provided, it was also provided, I believe, to Conservation Commission. So we can certainly pull that back up for you guys and take a look at.
Anything else?
No.
So it, it doesn't seem, I'm interested in what thoughts, and I know that Jim's been there. The sound doesn't seem to be very impactful. In terms of just the mechanics, the practice of day to day, how does, how does that work? So there's, there's a pile, you have a pile of twenty-four thousand tons. So that, the trucks come in with wherever they're coming from, put it in this pile, and there's a decision made, okay, we have, we have to crush it. That material is put on the crusher and then it's, then it, as it comes out, it goes into another pile?
So if, I think Nate is probably best equipped, but if I, when I was on site and also Mr. Vine, it's that there's the pile and then there's a backhoe that feeds the machine. So this machine, what, it's eleven belts?
Oh, it does, it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's basically, you're basically picking up a one yard bucket, filling a hopper with asphalt, broken asphalt, whole ground. Going through a crusher, making one inch minus material. So everything is one inch or smaller as a finished pile. That gets scooped up by a loader at the end of the crusher, it's a pile, which is coming off of conveyor belt. So the loader stacks it to basically the finished pile, which is a finished pile. So two piles, and basically once, once the crush of, so the rock asphalt gets too big, we call it crusher. I notify Jim, they're going to start crushing at this date. So once we're done checking out, we can see the whole operation, how it's running, being misted with a little dust. And basically, I let them know what we're doing, it's a one week, it's a two weeks, however long it is, one for this weekly rental of the crusher, so that we go for one week at a time. And then make as much as we can and have time for that, averaging about a thousand tons a day. So I have, with my rents, I have forty-four running hours, which is basically five days. The finished pile, which is basically a daily operation. We have trucks coming in, either empty or loaded. Usually the more they're empty, they're getting loaded with gravel, but at job sites, and then they come back in from daytime, broken asphalt. If we're in the area, we dump it at our facility. And then we're not dumping at our locations throughout this area or our close job sites. Some places charges, one place that is not charged is our supplier, our, our industry, go around them. But we try to haul what we can there and haul anything else that's close to us back, obviously.
But then with an increased capacity to crush, there would be increased material that you would sell to outside vendors.
We're looking into that as an option, we'd like to, to offset some costs. Obviously, whatever went on last year, there's additional costs to our company. We're trying to create a way to, not just the cost on payment, but also supply, pay, product. If we can, we make it, so why not sell it? Just an idea.
Right, so, so right now, all, all that's happening is that you're using your, your own-
I'm using more than I can make right now. Right now, what we're doing is we have days that's on, you know, weather, that are issues we can't pay. I have ten trucks sitting, doing nothing. So what I do is I go to another company, buy ground from them and haul it back in to our facility. So we have enough for supply, so we're running it basically. And that's also increasing trucks. There's some days where ten trucks running every hour on our street. And it's just the last meeting we had. It's, by, by basically doing this, we're offsetting that. So keeping, you know, our crushings on site, less trucks, or maybe louder or similar, so the same amount of trucks on road. Overall.
Is it, is it conceptually possible that you do the thousand, thousand ton crushing in one day? You would also have a complimentary delivery of raw material to crush to bring it back up?
Well, right now, we're limited on the bring it today. So we can only bring in a little hundred tons per day for our DEP.
Because of the maximum height and width of the pile, because of the crushing days. So essentially, if we go up to the hundred day, we're still going to be maxed out with how much material can come in. Essentially, you can only produce a hundred thousand tons with a hundred day mark.
So would that, would that pile get bigger then?
No, so we always have to break it.
And that's a requirement, and that would also require a change in permitting, it's not an intention of the act.
And we can't because of our stormwater management that we were discussing before. Those are our max capacity back there. There is no, we, when we initially went for it, it's maxed out. There's no ability to go larger, even with an application. It would not be doable with our stormwater management plan.
So if, if you have more number of days to crush, that would increase your, your ability to bring in more. We have a hundred fifty tons limit now, but you would, where would you go? Well, if you had a hundred days, where would that take you?
So obviously, we're aiming not high, so we can grow, but we've had a lot of growth with our business in the last few years, more than we ever expected. We obviously, it's exciting. We want to, you know, as for, sorry, we're pushing it forward.
So right now, you can bring in a hundred fifty, you can crush it a thousand. So the, the amount gets smaller. But if, if you increase the number of days, let's just say a hundred, what is your daily intake?
Four oh six would be your max at that point. The amount would be at four oh six over, for operating day as an average number, be your max.
That's what you can bring in?
That, that would be your max bringing in, correct? Which essentially is relative coming out, because a ton of the ton in both directions, pressure and pressure.
Do you foresee, so, so that's, if it's, do you foresee moving up to the four hundred and sixty day?
So we put some math in that we were talking about, just what we're currently doing as a company.
So four oh six is, again, the average. If you say that they can crush a thousand a day, you obviously have to have the back pile of the raw material to crush into that, plus minus one inch or minus one inch usable new gravel product. But that, they use, and you see downs where in sort of the second to last paragraph, that on a high output day, where they have maybe a big set of commercial jobs or whatnot, they'll use four hundred fifty tons of this base gravel. So there's still the truck requirement that that gravel has to come from somewhere. And again, this is the Bellham company, that does a lot of work in Bellham and in the surrounding areas. But there is a, a limit to how far you can go. There's an obvious geographic area before it becomes uneconomic to drive these heavy materials too far before it makes more sense to just use a local contractor to that area. So these are in the area, but if they can't crush more gravel based on the twenty day, they still have to get that filled gravel from somewhere else. So there's the offset of the truck trips, where if they can bring in the stuff when they come into the site anyway, crush it and then use it from there, they might cut out a leg of the trip where they leave from the facility here, which is the home base, go pick up gravel, then go to the job, which may or may not be in the Farm Street area, but there's still a similar number of truck trips generating from the location regardless. So it's, you have to have the gravel to complete the jobs. It's just, what we're requesting is the opportunity to create that gravel themselves, which again, is recycling something that has near no value and being something. They take old driveways and make them a reusable fill crack. So it is, it's, it's an unusual thing, but it's certainly recycling.
So if, if a thousand, if a thousand tons a day is the maximum output, soon that's the worst case scenario. That's forty-one.
Correct. Forty-one triaxle on trucks, yes.
Taking the stuff, then there would be some number of trucks coming in to replace up to the four hundred and six.
And, well, these trucks, and this, I don't need to interrupt my client here, but these trucks oftentimes, if you can do it, you prefer not to have them run empty so that if you're bringing clean fill gravel to the site and you've just pulled up a driveway, you'll reload the truck with that. So it's still the similar number of trucks.
I think what part of the concern the board has is opening a Pandora's box of, of creating, or allowing a business, and, and I think we're all happy that you guys are doing well. The, the issue is, is that we generally have good results with the people that come before us in terms of controlling their trucks. And we always struggle with the trucks we can't control. And I believe, without speaking for anyone else, it's the, the sale portion of it all, where vendors are coming from somewhere else and we can't control that. You really, you can kind of control, but not really. A driver's going to drive whatever way they come, and there's really no way of knowing and forcing. So I, I know that, at least that's where I'm coming from, is the, it seems like sound is okay. It's the control of the, the retail portion of it that would really kind of, you know, a thousand tons a day can be moving. So I don't, I don't, I don't know how we handle that in terms of the traffic.
Yeah. I think there is some level of personal corporate responsibility here where the liability does come back to the controls of the site, to turn around clients here, both through asphalt and Farm Street problems, all seen happen tonight. The, I can't necessarily think of a simple way to guarantee all of this beyond the willingness that each of these trucks is obviously DOT registered, has the name of the entity on the side of it. There's all those regulations and laws that these companies comply with, coupled with the DDP regs that need to know where this dirt is from because, or not dirt in this case, but these, these products are from. Because there's about all these cases in this part of the world where there's asbestos, soil we're getting done places. All those regulations are tightened up. But I do think it has to come down to, I can't promise you something on the front end, but if you have the enforcement mechanism on the back end to, to penalize, well, bad actors, but in this case, if my client doesn't control its site in a manner that's conducive to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood, I don't think we'd argue against the town having some enforcement mechanism to knock down days or shut down. It needs to be critically important where the economics for allowing them to do this are such that if they allow the site to get sloppy, there needs to be a way to, to sting them.
Yeah, and, but the enforcement is the tricky part. It hasn't worked in other projects we had in the past. It's just, it's just impossible. Well, that truck is going there, no one watches it. You drive by a truck and that's three seconds from there. What percentage of the, of the thousand tons a day do you feel like your, your, your operations would utilize? So what amount would you expect?
So on the, the bottom couple paragraphs of this, we tried to break that down where on a, a slow day, they would use roughly two hundred and sixteen tons for, for nine trucks using their own product, or on a much busier day, they would use up to four hundred and fifty tons. And again, where we got that four oh six number is that if you had the hundred days, obviously, they would average a thousand tons a day because we don't, we don't have them. We're not requesting that cart wash to crush at all times. So again, if every day is running at max capacity and you sort of average that four oh six and that comes into play, they still might have to buy something on site, but you would expect as averages tend to work that you might be able to have a big Monday and a slightly smaller Tuesday and end up using a fair portion of that amount themselves.
What do you, what do you anticipate to be your sales?
Well, it breaks down that on a slower day, there's a possibility that they could end up having about eight additional trucks that they could offload to another user.
That would be eight times, like, four, a hundred and something?
Right. Two hundred and a man, great work, lawyers.
I don't know. Okay. Liz?
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions in terms of your historic business growth. We talked about how the business has grown exponentially beyond what you anticipated. Do you have sort of a five year growth plan?
Sure.
You know, what, I, I'd be interested to hear how that compares to the last four years? More, I guess, exponentially, not necessarily internally, all of that.
Sure. Yeah, so I think at this point, we both feel from a cultural perspective, we're really at that point of being where we want with employees. So we've kind of capped out as far as number of jobs we can get done in a day, maybe adding another five to 10 roles that we're a little low on now, given, given the situation. We, it'll be about seventy employees. We're at about sixty-four to sixty-six, sixty-eight, depending on the season. Sometimes we have repair crews, maintenance crews. So we're really looking at, as opposed to continually to build the top line with what we're doing at our location, finding ways to lower costs to be able to reinvest in the town, in our company, which this is a huge piece of that. Obviously, making the gravel at two dollars a ton versus buying it at ten, eleven, plus tax, plus trucking, is a significant way for us to grow without having to necessarily increase the top line number and generate more revenue through the jobs. The other thing that we are looking at from a growth opportunity really is working with subs. So companies kind of on the outskirts, the areas that we work, because our brand is so well recognized. Really, that's been the direction that we've gone. We're working with a local steel company currently out of Dover and working with building our brand through subbing. So it's not anything more really to grow that facility itself, but an opportunity for growth for the company. So it's kind of the direction that we're going now.
Got it. And, and, you know, I know you've mentioned to the cost to, you know, do these applications and come before us and the DDP and all of that. If, if, whatever we decide, you know, if it's an extra twenty days or an extra whatever or nothing, do you anticipate, like, if we give you something, do you think you'll need to be here in a year? And that's why you're worried about the cost? Or if you're coming in another four years, is eleven thousand or twenty thousand dollars that big of an impact on your business?
Sure, that's an excellent question. I think where we came to the hundred is we feel very comfortable at that number for our current gravel needs, as well as that allowing some flexibility with ebb and flow of the economy. So we really feel that that number, when we broke it down, is where we're at to have what we need to sustain what we're doing, the little bit of growth that we might want, and then ebb and flow with what could or may come from an economic standpoint with the gravel.
That's all I had.
First of all, thank you for inviting me up there and seeing the operation. I was part of the permitting process originally, so that helped me to see what we're doing on. A couple of observations. First of all, what I saw was one pile of asphalt, production, we were grinding it up, and then a second pile of leftover, after it's been ground up and that gets cleaned up. So pretty much exactly what you described. The pile of asphalt, you know, I didn't have a good way of measuring how high it was, but I'll say it was, you know, my observation was it was a couple of stories plus minus one. Okay, so pretty tall and it's such, it was a ballpark. I guess one, you know, the sound, I'll comment on the sound. I didn't feel the sound was the overwhelming decision point on this. the overwhelming decision point on this. We did sound meters and all that, but you know, when we were walking down the driveway, you could hear 495, you couldn't hear the operation. Needway down the time, the front of the driveway, there was a trickle of operation across the street, which is obviously very loud, it was drowning up everybody. So maybe that wasn't the perfect analogy on that one, but you know, the sound wasn't the main concern. It's really the, for me, it's the amount of stuff there and the you know, sounds of the people and not having your direct information. You know, I said, a story plus a noise. You know, I guess the question I have today is how many, how many tons do you think you have today on that site? This year, I mean, is it crush supply this year?
Five.
Five. So, you know, today, how many tons of asphalt there's currently there today?
Roughly about 7,000 tons of gravel right now. I'd say roughly about 9,000 tons of broken asphalt.
Nine thousand, okay. I was gonna guess that we, okay, nine thousand. Is that, the other piece, I guess what I was gonna ask is that last time with conversation in the meeting, you noticed that we look at purchase mission. That was part of the decision points in the quantities that you requested. Has that changed? You were saying when I was on site, we didn't want to get into a lot of conversation, but is that still your intention? Can you clarify that?
Yeah, once you realize what these things cost. To justify buying last work every day. Otherwise, I don't sense the value of this purchase. So we actually have a friend of ours who owns an operation different town, who does the same product. And we learned a lot from them as for learning how his operation works. And basically even he rents, because he doesn't pressure every day. What these things cost, meaning you're better off just renting. So we rent it on a monthly basis. It's not our machine. We, we always agrees it, fuel it up, we're back.
And I, and I can understand trying to, you know, improve the margins on your business. It certainly sounds like something that you're trying to improve margins on.
Absolutely.
I can appreciate that. I, I guess my concern is that, you know, this isn't the, this, this isn't the permit that, that we were talking about then. So we did too, you know, I wasn't part of the board, but that's not the operation that's back. Back, yeah.
Yeah.
So this is, this is, and, and I want to hear more about the uses and permits that you have for resubmitment. I think that needs to be clarified currently right now. To me, that's, you know, that's a different, if, you know, if that's a completely different use, does that need to have a whole new permit? As opposed to just adding, you know, number of days. That's a concern. You know, so I guess I have quite a few concerns about it. The sound, certainly visiting, that ride down, the amount of stuff there that that pile of sand. We'll adjust the height.
Right now it's about, I'd say twenty-three feet straight up.
Yeah, it's a ramp, it's a giant ramp.
Yeah.
You know, so. And you get trucks going up and down it.
Yep.
You know, all the ocean stuff that I'm sure that's covered, but twenty-three feet of asphalt is a lot. Yes. You know, I'd be very interested in, and you said that there was a study that was done. But as far as we're always concerned, it's found. I think that probably needs to be circulated.
Right.
The branch, is it a public record?
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely just believe that.
I guess, you know, there's findings in there.
Right.
This is on, you know, this is on our watershed. So the finding in years is basically based upon the old material was, it wasn't really a concern, but that's not, that's not what we're talking about.
To reiterate, the piles are not changing, right? So the only factor that's changing is how often we're crushing the material. So the stormwater management, the pile height, those regulations cannot change. Meaning that as far as with DEP, we're maxed out. So they, we have a regulation of 30 feet tall line, eight and a half wide. So when we talk about the permit then versus the permit now, truly none of that is changing.
That's worth a 20 right now. Does that stay the same with the 100?
Correct, absolutely.
So the size of the pile doesn't change.
Twenty-four thousand tons wide with that. Yes. So that just, you'll see more of this. But it won't, the pile sizes themselves will not change.
It would be interesting to understand.
I think we'd all like to see this report, but hoping and assuming it's not particularly too toxic substance if all of us are gonna leave this meeting tonight and walk across this through our cars. So it is just used asphalt.
Well, well, used asphalt, you know, sometimes it can come from residential floors and sometimes it comes from the business. And that business has other, you know, uses and other toxins on their site that end up on baby. So I guess I'd like to see some of that.
And that is something that we had to environmentally prove and with the DEP that they regulate, we cannot have an RCC crushing operation for something that is considered volatile. So you wouldn't even be able to have a recyclable crushing permit for something that is considered toxic.
I understand the engineering and the costs for developing things can be expensive. To me, eleven, eleven thousand dollars is significant. A business that, successful business like yours. I, I think that you should try and squeeze margins and I understand that, but I think that might be, you know, might be part of the cost of the business.
That's only the application.
Yeah.
That's one piece of that, but.
I understand, eleven thousand dollars on my part would be expensive. But I guess what I'm saying is you take the number of years and what you guys do here. To me, I mean, that's your decision. It was to propose it. I'll just put that on there. I, I think, you know, my concern is who's coming on the site? Are you selling it or do you have permits for that? Other people's trucks coming in, you know, your employees, I, I suspect believe that you've got no complaints from the company, the way you present yourself. I don't care, prior, I believe if you saw something squashing you, train them down. So when you get some other company involved, yeah, you worry about the business. But it's the other business. So that's a, that's a concern. So you can go with that, if you get some much. It's cool. That's my comments.
And I have a few more comments. Can you want to clarify what the final end product is instead of rap?
Similar, it's basically, it's a large mine screen process for asphalt.
So it's recycled asphalt?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. I happen to come across a safety data sheet for recycled asphalt. It's about eight pages long. And I'm sure you're aware, it's a carcinogen category one in, which is significant.
It's, as far as our last survey we went through, nothing's evolved by water.
Okay.
So nothing, if you drop with water, nothing.
But just, but again, it's still a carcinogen.
If you eat it, maybe, I'm not sure.
Oh. I also want to go back to our last meeting in May and our meeting tonight. The original permit granted you, you requested approximately 12 vehicle trips per day. In your appreciation this evening, in your presentation in May, in May you indicated off and gone, you're doing 13 round trip stops per hour during the day for several hours a day.
I didn't say that on the range or the whole and gravel project.
And then today, you said that could end up being 10 round trip hours per day for several hours. So right there, you're in violation from the current point. Twelve trips per day.
I believe what we said was at the time of application, we've had about 12 trucks.
Well, no, you indicated 12 vehicles per day.
At that time.
Yes, and that's what the permit says. The permit has some requirements. Okay, and I'm just trying to work within the requirements of the permit. So you also indicated that, I've seen two different factors. One point eight trips per hour and then one 9.4 trips per hour multiplied over 10 to 12 hours. That increases it to about 9.6 to 10.4 vehicles per day, which is an increase of like 83% of the permanent 12 trips per day.
So to reflect back on what Nathan was speaking about with that hall, that's what the contractors yard in Medway, that he was referring to the gravel that we were bringing in.
Those trucks were in Bellin?
That was not with Bellin, no.
The Dell trucks don't drive in Bellin?
They do drive in Bellin.
Okay, so.
Okay, so that was a misunderstanding then on our part. I didn't realize, I thought it was an average. But on Randy's and wood hauling material, we weren't intentionally doing anything outside of what we believe.
I understand, but it's outside the permit.
Okay.
Regardless intentional or unintentional. He requested, and when you were here, I was here, it was 12 trips per day. And it was a small amount of quote unquote virgin asphalt at the end of the day. So, you know, right now you've admitted in not adhering to the confines of the permit. In regards to hours of operation. Jim, this, what does the permit say? I thought it might have said 6:00 AM to dusk.
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. And then you requested operations from 6:30 AM to 7:30 PM. 7:30 PM goes beyond dusk, okay? Just, just being clear, okay? You also indicated on your website that your hours of operation are Monday to Thursday, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Friday, 8:00 to 4:00 PM, close Saturdays. And you don't do any work, you don't do work in the night.
Those are our office hours.
Okay, but you, you indicated at the last meeting, you do not do any work in the night.
I mean, we've done some giving.
Yes, if you look on your website.
Right.
It shows you're doing parking lots at night in Steelville.
Sure, we've done that at subcontractors for other companies.
Okay, but when the permit was granted.
Right.
You were not working in the night.
Not, no, most of our business is not in the night.
Okay, so again, that's another violation of the parameters of the permit. We asked you not to work in the night, not to have vehicles coming back and forth in the street.
We haven't done any work since Farm Street at night. That was all.
I'm not saying on Farm Street.
Oh, okay.
Your vehicles have to come and go, correct?
No, 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 I mean, since we've been at the Farm Street facility.
Okay, well, on your website.
Sure, yes, that was some work.
Doing something in Target in Steelville.
Yes.
Okay. You also indicate that you're shut down during the winter months, December to March, no operations?
We have some office operations, we'll give you some plans.
All right. What's interesting, you talked about corporate responsibility. I went on their website two or three weeks indicating snowplow and standing, okay? That has to be done in the night, correct? Okay, so again, another instance, where you indicated to us, you're not working at night. I find it also very interesting that within the past two or three weeks, any reference to snowplowing or standing is no longer on the website. Dennis?
And you originally was.
It's not, I can't find it right now.
Yeah, I'm in our recently.
I mean, we updated our website about what year ago? We haven't made any recent changes to our website regardless. Honestly, when we talk about operations for paving, we were referring to the paving. I didn't, I, there was no, I feel as though, I don't know who wants to speak to us, but I feel like we're being, our goals have been to be transparent all along. If we've had misunderstandings, if we apologize, that's not been our goal. I mean, we're just, yeah, I mean.
Yeah.
Goals and actuality are two different things, but you talk about corporate responsibility. Okay, so we have seen you not adhere to the hours of service. You told you weren't working nights, you have inference of nights and also snowplowing. We told you 12 trips per day. You've admitted to going sometimes 13 trips an hour or 10 trips. Correct? You said that this evening and you said 13 trips an hour in May. So that's beyond the 12 trips per day. So I'm, I'm just saying, you, this is not minimal changes to the permits. These are maximum changes. Okay, I don't, I don't think this is minimal.
I think.
And I, I think the board, a good thing, offered to increase 40 hours, 40 days per year. That's a hundred percent increase in what was asked. And it was, you know, denied that quickly. And then also, I, I know things have changed, but at the May 13th meeting, initial request was they wanted to answer that evening. And I think some could correct me if I'm wrong. I think I still, geez, I feel like I have a gun to me.
Sure, you did say that.
Okay, and that's how I felt. So, you know, I, I still feel comfortable in offering the 40 days per year with some conditions. But again, we have to work within the permits that we already have. We can't set those aside and decide to go to increase traffic, we're gonna impact function. Function is Stephen Burley, that's the name. I noticed that your hours of operation are to approach that this evening, 5 o'clock, I'm sure you can put up some, it extends all and 4 o'clock on Fridays, but you're in a residential area. You want to work on standing. That truck traffic is in the bar, the neighbors in the area, above Medway and Bellin. So I, I, I think, you know, we've seen examples where you haven't worked within the permits already.
We've been doing this for three years.
Yeah, and you're, you're a great name.
With how many complaints?
Zero, that's fine.
We've been great near this.
I, I agree.
And I, you know, I, I, I feel like you want us to come back and request for 24-hour business for snowplowing.
He never told us, never told us your full operation.
We did talk about.
I think there are some opportunities clearly where if I and my clients review the permit as is written and look at what the current operations are such that we can make sure that the board has the full picture where things need to be remedied or potentially modified, we will do it through the permanent process and understand the chairman's consternation about this.
Well, it's our party's concerns. You know, we're, we are elected by the residents of Bellin.
Right, understood.
And, you know, it impacts not only Bellin, but many. I drove down that street last Saturday and you go through a neighborhood. You go through a couple of different meetings. And yes, I, I know you're, you're, you're a great names. You're a great business. But right now, the permit, it's the permit. You know, correct me if I'm wrong.
Certainly not, Cameron, you are correct.
And so based on, you know, what we have been saying this evening and the facts that I've provided to you, it shows that you're not complying with the permits. So, yeah, I don't know where we go from here. I would like to maybe propose again the 40 hours. I'm sorry, 40 days, excuse me.
Understood.
Okay. Yeah.
How, how critical is the selling component? It's not a game changer, we just didn't like to do it. But something that we can't do is, is obviously me, this product is a problem. I honestly thought coming in here, we, why not try it? Why not try to offer some products that a lot of this area need? Uh, not a lot, but a few other contractors, you know, who sometimes here and there that have a need for this material. We can't sell it, we don't have enough of it. So why not offer it? But if this is a game changer, we need it for ourselves. So that's, that's the main priority. So that's, that's the main priority.
So that we're something where it started with the days being. Where we're trying to be, and it was let's put a contingency on discussing the saleability aspect to outside companies in the future. But that's something that could be an edible conversation for the future, and that was a better stepping stone versus the lesser days. We would be very open to that. Given, hopefully, there could be some language referencing, obviously, the bordering property and or operating entity asphalt engineering. Because obviously, from a legal perspective, it's not the same business. So I think if there'd be a way to do that versus if the, if the bigger concern is the truck traffic from outside vendors and where that material is coming from. Maybe a baby step of doing the additional crushing days first with the entertained conversation. From the saleability, which indeed would, would involve additional permitting in cases of that nature. From what we understand, this is just the first step to then get the approval from GDP to then come and say. Can we sell this material, right? So I think that that could be a further conversation because essentially, if the town doesn't allow us to sell it, we can't sell it. So really, the hundred days is, is the point, and we did put some calculations in here about at that maximum output. What we are talking even at a thousand tons per day in a hundred days. At a maximum would be like one point three trucks an hour, average max. So just to kind of put in perspective from, from that major tire standpoint, because obviously. From the top, it's some really big numbers, but drilled down, putting that into some perspective, you know.
Additionally, I'd like to address the chairman's comment. I certainly don't want it to seem that we don't. Aren't considering, aren't respectful of the fact the board is working with us and even considering the forty hours. I was just hoping that through our presentation and this discussion tonight. That really the pile size doesn't change, the truck trips don't really change, it's a difference.
It's a truck for exchange, which is said a moment ago, one point three trucks an hour times twelve. That is an increase of over a hundred percent truck traffic on scenic roads.
So when we were trucking in material and trucking out material because it's Medway land, which was, again, now we understand our misunderstanding of those Rennies and using that truck traffic. For our storage facility on Medway property. That was a misunderstanding from our perspective of that contractors yard on Medway land. So I think what you're saying is because we were doing that trucking. If you break it down as relative, there have been no complaints. Now understanding that that was in violation, that was never our intent. We thought because we had a contractors yard for gravel storage in Medway, that we were not in violation by bringing that material. And just to clarify, because we are transparent people and we're, we're both, we're a couple of integrity. That's super important, I do want to state that, even when we're talking about our operation, we're talking about our paving operation. It never, I swear that we talked about plon, we've always done plon, it's minimal, we do it for the town of Franklin. It's not something that is a huge portion of our business, it's to help cover, you know.
I don't remember plon mentioned.
Yeah, so it's always something we want, yeah. Yeah.
I thought you went larger than that.
Oh, no, we didn't, we did, we did, we did. We have a couple of year-round improvements we need to hear about.
Maybe something perhaps we could, that addresses the concern about increased traffic and global traffic. And their need to produce material for their own processing. If they were to sort of agree not to sell it. Would the board, would they go find a number more important?
Let's, let's see the public stage, I don't want to. Jim, do you want to?
Sure, is there any, if, does anyone in the public who wishes to be heard, they can just unmute and say your name.
This is Representative Soder.
Go ahead, Representative Soder.
Well, usually I don't get too involved in decisions that are before the local boards. But I felt the need that I needed to be here tonight to support Erin and Nate from Asphalt Engineering. Not only as a selectman do I know them coming before the town to grow a facility. When a great young couple put everything on the line to find a home on, I think it was South Maple Street originally, was where you started, right? If I remember correctly, and they wanted to grow. They looked for a piece of land, and like we know, like Maple Street is, it has residential issues. And as we know, that our streets aren't built to the widest capacities that they should be built at, but they're built to the DOT standard. And I just, you know, I'm, I'm sitting here also proud to say these folks. Have constituents that this board and myself and many of the other elected boards in Bellingham. It's a very local company and employs a lot of people locally with good paying jobs. And they have been great stewards of the town. They've always been there to support the town, not only when I was a selectman. But I see it every day and every week, the, the things that they're asked upon them to do. I would also say that's unfortunate, sometimes we have scenic roads in, in Bellingham that have industrial zoning in it. And sometimes these things come before us. I sat there, I went through and I walked through that property. And I'm amazed that we're talking about enforcement when there's things going on that street that are not enforced. And they're sitting here doing it the right way. And they're coming before you and trying to survive and to expand the business, that yes, business models do change. That's what's great about having small business owners, because in our economy and in this economy, those are the folks that thrive. And those are the folks that we need desperately to keep people working. They employ not only Bellingham residents, just in my four towns alone. They, they support and offer jobs that work for them. They're great people. The other thing that I'm amazed at is that on all the meetings that I've seen, we're talking about the enforcement and everything they did. If they were doing such a terrible job with that. I think knowing this town and knowing the residents we represent, you would have been flooded at this meeting with disgruntled residents. So that tells me, yes, there may be some issues and there might be some addresses and some concerns that were brought up tonight. But they're not here. They're not disgruntled, they're not attacking these folks. I've been, I've seen some of your meetings over the years. People are not afraid to address their concerns. And part of our job is to look at that as elected officials, to say that something must be going right, and they must be doing something right. Because you do not have anybody complaining here tonight. And I will say, part of the reason I got involved in this was because I was, I, Erin called me about Mass DEP and working with them. It's a, it's a grueling process, and their attorney is absolutely correct. That's just an eleven thousand dollar application fee. There's other costs associated every time DEP comes out, every time DEP, DEP has a demand, every time DEP oversees something. It's a grueling process. I think they came before you, yes, everybody would like to have everything, we all know that. I think they looking at putting forth a, their proposal of a hundred days, they're thinking it through, they're trying to fit the best way they can. And they're trying to work with all of you I can see desperately to come up with a solution. And I don't think out of the realm, from what, everything that I've seen there, and I watched it, and I went there multiple, multiple, multiple times throughout the day. You've got trucks going up and down that street that are not theirs. You've got track, the trail is cutting from one side of Farm Street to get to the other side of town. And when, when the town starts doing construction on Hartford Ave. Guess what's going to happen? You're not going to be able to control any of the information, it's going to all, all, all traffic, it's all going to go around Farm Street. So traffic's going to get even heavier. Looking, I'm, again, this is very unusual for me to get involved in things like this, at this level. I know I was involved in it at a town level, but at this level, it's very unusual for me to come and speak. They are good stewards, they are good people, they are good business owners, they are not absentee owners. They are not Amazon on Maple Street, they are not, you know, Victory Packaging. They have millions and millions of dollars, those people. You're not looking at Jeff Bezos right there, you're looking at a young couple that built a company in Bellingham, Massachusetts. And built a very strong, and we should be happy they're succeeding and coming before you and coming before the town. Growing. We should be proud of that, and we should help them continue to grow, yes, the right way, the best possible way. And if, if, from what I've seen from them so far, since they've been there, they have been very good neighbors. And I've talked to many people on Farm Street that are very happy with what they do to enforce their trucks. And take care of their situation, and everything that Erin and Nate do is at a serious level. So, again, if they weren't doing that, I'm just perplexed a little bit, because if they weren't doing that. You're, you guys know you would be flooded with complaints. I looked and I investigated, you have, you had a very few amount of complaints at the very beginning. That Erin and Nate, because it was new to people, but Erin and Nate took care of it right away. I know, I was a selectman then when that started. So I would just ask the board to please seriously consider what they're asking. Yes, work with them the best way you possibly can. I think, you know, all of you on that planning board, you know, over the years, I've got to know all of you. And I know you make some tough decisions and it's not an easy job, it isn't. But I think if you could put together a plan, something that they will enforce, I know Erin, Erin is going to enforce it. And I know Nate, and I know Nate's going to enforce it. And just keep in mind that you represent a lot of people that work there. And they're trying to keep those people working all year round the best way they can without sacrificing jobs. So as a state rep, that is very important to me. And that is one of the biggest things, and the reason I got involved is because a lot of their employees asked me to step up. So I want to thank you and I appreciate it, and like I said, I know you don't have an easy job, it's not very easy. It's the toughest job in town, I believe, is the planning board. And, and as far as any environmental, there's one thing, a couple, two things I want to just also address. I've had conversations with Mass DOT. You know, it's very difficult to put a lot of these restrictions on what you want to do with trucks. You, you know, there's a lot of laws and things that you can only do and you can control. And when you start controlling too much, it's going to affect your overall funding with roads and how we go about formulations. To pay for roads and give you money from a state level. The second thing on the environmental piece. DEP, long conversations with them. You know, they are, Erin and Nate are very, very careful on what they're trying to do. They're not going to want every business grinding up roads and doing whatever they're doing and bringing it here and, 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 and taking that risk. Because they know how dangerous that is to the environment. And they're very cognizant of that fact. And I think from a DEP standpoint, they would like to see it just, okay, this is what we're doing, it's a hundred days. And I really firmly believe that that's a better scenario for them to just do this once and have all the controls in place. So DEP can manage that effectively. We, you know, we keep doing this every time and grow and grow and grow, it gets to be tedious, because it's tedious for DEP also. And there's a lot of money that is associated with that, and I understand that's the cost of doing business. But, you know, and Amazon can afford to do that. Small business owners, they're taking the risk, they, they see an expansion now, but this down, this economy can downturn at any time. Heck, we saw a pandemic happen. You know, anything could turn this economy around. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight, I truly appreciate it. And I hope that planning board will work with them and, and really work on that hundred day scenario with them or a compromise. To make it work out for the best solution to keep this business thriving, thank you.
Thank you.
I guess the hand raised.
Am I unmuted? Yes, I am, okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Soder. Couple of things I would add on to what Representative Soder had to say. First and foremost, I think everybody on the Plinum Board, I would really encourage you to go to the site. I met personally with Erin and Nate today and walked back to exactly, you know, where all this is, is happening and. You know, we're not looking at a mulch pit like you see on Maple Street, this is very secluded, it's cushioned. And as Representative Soder said, there have been no complaints about noise or traffic. And just spending time talking with Nate and Erin. There are so many regulations, not only from the state government, but. Precaution steps that they're going to put in place to make sure that all the people that come onto that property are vetted. Erin was talking to me about, you know, you basically have one violation and you're out. You don't, you know, if you don't meet the criteria that you, the planning board, board agree to, guess what, you don't get to do business with us. And the other thing I know to be very true is what amazing community advocates they are. There is not a fundraiser or any event I've been to that asphalt engineering hasn't been part of. So they want to be in this with us together. You know, it's unfortunate that perhaps some of the points being made tonight, I don't genuinely think were ever. Intentional, I mean, just, I, I spent an hour with them today and, you know. This is a legacy they want to pass on to their kids, so they don't want to screw this up. I mean, they, they want to be doing things that are right for them business-wise, but also for us as a community. So, you know, it's awesome to have an opportunity to work with a business that has actually succeeded and done well during the pandemic. So I would just encourage you to really get onto the property, take a look at it. You know, they're not trying to hijinx us at all, is my personal opinion, my personal opinion. Sorry, I'm slurring my words because it's nine twenty-four, I'm usually in bed an hour ago, but I digress. Anyway, thank you for giving me a chance to, to speak and happy to talk to any of you on a one-on-one basis. I had a conversation with Bill earlier today, and I just hope we can really find a happy. Medium or whatever the word is to, to make it work for them and make it work for the town, so thank you.
Thank you.
One, I think, one last hand up from Mr. Dan Spencer.
Good evening, how are you guys tonight? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
All right, I, I just want to dovetail on what, what Mr. Soder and Mrs. McNulty said with regards to asphalt engineering. I just want to go back to originally when the original permit was issued. I know there were questions tonight with regards to stormwater management, whether or not it's a carcinogen. Those issues were addressed back when this was originally issued. Concom had a sign off on this with regards to their detention ponds or detention bitches. Which met the criteria that needed, as far as the reclamation of the asphalt. It's not. It's not being manufactured. So the gassing that usually happens from manufactured asphalt, again, this is going back to twenty seventeen, isn't being established. And they're doing the reclamation, the crushing with the misting process, which is keeping any kind of dusting down. That was all addressed back when the original permit was, was issued. So why it's being rehashed now, I'm a little kind of confused. The other thing that I'm a little perplexed by is, as Mike and Cindy both indicated, and I think even most of the planning board indicated that. These folks have been very good neighbors to the town of Bellingham, and not just very good neighbors to their neighborhood. They've been very good business partners, and as Cindy talked about, they have been very good to the town when it comes to being part of the community. And they're an established business in this town that has a proven track record of being part of the community. So, I'm a little perplexed by the fact that it, it seemed as though the, the chairman of the Planning Board, he, he came off a, a little aggressive with his questioning. It was a little profitorial, if you, if you ask me. He, he, he would give these questions and, and hope that he can get a got to answer, answer, excuse me. And as a resident and a, as a, a, a member of a fellow board in this town, that's not what I'd like to hear when it comes to businesses, especially established businesses that have a proven track record this town, being treated. I, I honestly think it came off as insulting, and I understand he has concerns, and certainly addressed those concerns, that's why he got elected. But, I, I'm a little disappointed in, in the way that these folks have been treated when it came to this hearing. That's all I have to say, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Let me address that, please. What I simply did was to show to the public, the board, that we provided them with three permits. I was able to go through a couple of documents and indicate where they not operated within the confines with three permits. They can have misunderstandings, but what I simply did was go through what was granted to them four, four years ago, make sure the discrepancies in the business operations and what is on public information, on not being consistent. My intent was not to, I just wanna let the facts be clear on what has happened with regards to the operation system of the permit. That's all. The confines of the permit four years ago.
May I respond?
Of course.
Chairman? It, it wasn't the fact that you stated, it was the manner of which you stated those facts. That's what came off as disappointing to me.
Okay. Heard your comments. Anyone else?
I think that's it.
Okay.
So, what I was gonna suggest, maybe not tonight, or tonight for the matter of if they're agreeing not to sell the material outside the building, and only use it for their own complete operation, would there be some number between 40 and 100 that we could buy? And I would think there would be other, what do we always say, all the conditions? Conditions? Some other conditions with regard to hours of operation, the, the days in which we committed, some number of, if there are some violations observed, whether it's in traffic, sound, something, some number of those violations triggers, some sort of review by the planning board, something like that. If there is a, a number of the, and what's the number for your material purposes? 100 is a sell, what's the?
Well, 100 really is.
100 is gross to gross. Obviously, right now, we probably could survive at like 80,000, but that's not really giving us room to grow a little bit more for, for ourselves. I mean, obviously, for us to go sell anything, we're worried we're gonna sell it right away. So, that's something that we can even discuss down the road, if that's something we wanna pursue. Obviously, we hear your concern with that, so it sounds like it'd be pretty difficult to do that, but it's more for ourselves. Obviously, what we're buying it for is almost five times what it costs us actually to make it, so, plus tax, you know? So, it's a huge, huge purpose, still in Brown Brown.
I think for us, you know, obviously, sale is a loose term. From tax perspective, it would be helpful to be able to resell it to the entity that's operating within the property boundaries, right? So, asphalt.
So, here.
Right, so that would be beneficial, and something we still have to come in front of the town for, right?
I don't have a problem selling it.
Sure, so we'd have to obviously come into the sales tax. I think I would ask, and I think would be something, if we could get to a number of the crushing, which for me really originally was a lot more than 100, and I think we understood the concerns that were being brought forward, and for us, something that seems like very minimal, we obviously now grasp the significance, that's why we're here, right? I, I really feel like that 100 number is the number. I think what I'm hearing is more the outside traffic of, of companies outside of our company being the major concern. I would hope that if we said, okay, we weren't selling to outside companies that say after a year of operation, that that's something that we could consider, okay, from these hours, trying something like that potentially, if that's something you guys are comfortable with, other than external factor. But now, we have the use for that 100 days and to have some flexibility with our company and growth. We don't, because of what we just experienced last year, right? It brings a lot of thoughts to a business. I don't know two years from now, what could happen on the leaving side. That's why we're trying to really have the flexibility on the outside sales piece and not limiting ourselves with that, because if that change happened and our volume did decrease, of course, we would want the opportunity to be able to offset those losses with another functioning operation on site. So, that's more where we're trying to have that ability to do that.
I would think that, that component would require a lot more analysis
Of course.
Before that, we would be ready to say, okay,
Right.
if these trucks going this way, we've been, all of that would require a lot more thought
Okay.
and information from you, sort of, and appear, I don't know what, but that, given the, the location of the facility, given the, the nature of your business, you know, it's grinding rocks, you know, and, and all of that, I think that we need to be mindful of all the complexity that's going to, so that's why I think generally speaking, as a resident, open that door and then not know what the future may, we have all these threats, right? So, I don't, I don't know.
We, we understand that it needs to obviously collaborate with the town here, and that it requires subsequent review of our existing permits to make sure that clients potentially rate sizing anything that might be out of line right now. We're certainly no strangers to come before this board, and we'll do so in whatever way makes sense.
Is it fair to say you've overwhelmed the confines of the permits?
I see, uh, I mean, from what, yes, from now to understanding regarding the medical property.
I agree, some people may not agree with the approach, but I think you're articulate that you've overwhelmed the confines.
That's right.
I apologize, liberal or harsh, but, you know, in the documents, certain things were said and asked, I just simply wanted to indicate we've overwhelmed the confines of the permit. But my problem is, Jim, how do we address this, going through a whole new permitting process?
So, I, I think the offer from the attorney might be a good next step, perhaps the applicant goes through the decision and, and starts to provide you with some guidance as to what their true numbers are today through the determination. And, you know, we can look at it as, just like we did here, where it was, even the applicant, I said, you know, this looks like it's a major amendment to your decision, you're gonna need to notice and go through a public hearing process. With this, you know, if, if it's outlined that, you know, there's X amount more trucks, and it may be a minor, and the board could just issue a, you know, a decision that it's a minor modification. However, if it is significant, you know, it, it could potentially be a major modification.
So, we're on a vote on between a minor and major.
Right.
And if it's major, means a whole new process of permitting. And I think we've come to the realization that, you know, as I said, we've literally got to be overwhelmed the confines of the permit. There must be a way between all parties involved where we can still make this a minor change, not requiring full permitting process.
Yeah, I, I think that might be a good next step for the next, if, if the board was announcing, thinking about a continuation to go through that permit to see what are the changes to the business model, the business plan, how they've grown, and then on top of that, you know, the hours that, or days that they're looking to additionally crush, how that interacts with, with the updated permits, and, and then you could have a whole distinct picture and make a more informed determination of that.
You know, we, we thoroughly vetted, vetted very thoroughly these permits over a year time, and the company fortunately has outgrown due to their success. I've never indicated we're having complaints from the neighbors, or something said, and been able to document they've overwhelmed the parameters of the permit. I'd like to find a way that we can work with this and still make it move, because I don't, I don't think either of us wanna make this a major concern.
And I'm certainly happy to work with, you know, the attorney, the applicant, between now and the next year, you know, go through those decisions, what, what is the update.
I apologize if this, I, sure. I believe we did address the trucking decision in our initial request as well, because we knew that obviously this would be outside that, so is that not part of the major that we were here for? It was the crushing, we, we, that decision was referenced as well. I could be mistaken, but I believe that that was also part of the decision.
Special permit.
Yeah, was specifically addressing the 12 truck. That was part of the decision, so we did acknowledge that obviously that part of the permit would be changing, so that was part of the presentation, so the trucking and the crushing.
We, we were great, you've overwhelmed the parameters right here. And can I just wanna articulate that to the public that's not aware?
Right, okay, sure.
You know, a lot of people here, and the people in the audience are, are new to this.
Right, absolutely.
And as I've stated before, I've gone through, you know, the documents for the meetings and what you provided to us. We need to find a way to still make this minimal.
So, I think what you're hearing, something less than 100. So, think about that, think about the conditions, think about the impact, and how that's all gonna play out. Make us a proposal, hoping that that step would have already happened with this meeting, we'd have a little bit longer concrete idea, idea of what that might happen, but if we can make that happen, our attention to Jim in between, find the, the answer to the question.
What's your realistic point in the?
Um, not.
The next meeting is August 4th, there's only one meeting.
We only have one meeting in August, so I wanna make sure that we know, we don't continue this in August, we don't continue, I wanna address this as best we can. Are we looking in August, or are we looking at the first season?
We can, we can, we can, we can, we can, so, I would definitely wanna do the next meeting, just because by then, it's nothing, it's gonna be function for this, you know, with the next season.
Is it one meeting in August?
Yes, there is. See, the, the second person in August.
Yeah, okay.
Do I give you enough time to drive home, Beth? I heard the wagon train, but yeah, you can get it done.
And so, we understand what you're looking for us is essentially to drill down further from the 100 to another number that would suffice our business still, because we feel like it's 100.
Right, I have a question. So, is your goal to not do this again?
Yes.
Ever? Yeah, okay, yeah.
And then that's our goal is.
I don't wanna come here every year.
That number is 100, I think you've worked this number forward and backwards. I mean, is it 100 in perpetuity? Because, yes, okay, so you don't ever expect to grow beyond that ever?
No.
That is our goal, like, bottom line.
Limits to the site that we've discussed previously, that at some point you need bigger piles, et cetera, which this site cannot.
Substorm on a minute.
Right.
Absolutely, and, and the ramifications of the property itself.
The understanding of permitting in town of Bell.
Right.
There's, there's a confluence of factors that say that 100 is as far as we could go, and that was why, again, certainly didn't mean to be rude if I dismissed 40 hours, et cetera, it's just that we've had a month of discussions, and we really thought 100 was kind of the number that we could work with. But again, I'm not, I don't think we're here to be in transit either and trying to be good faith negotiators with the town about this, because I think we're all trying to flexible and get something done that works for the municipality, you know?
Yes, so the question was 100, I guess that was where I was going last. Is 100 is, that, that the maximum in sight, that's the maximum growth we think in the future? We need to compromise here, and I'm looking for a compromise, we started at 20 and I'm like, okay, I think that's where we were, okay? We know that's not the one right now, okay? You guys have certainly earned, earned something above what we're doing now. When I was last time around, I was ready to move on, okay? Not to, not to where you're looking for now, but I was looking to move on. So, you, you certainly, you know, as, as the witnesses came from the audience, you earned, okay? So, thank you. But I think when my question is digging back into hers is, we're not looking, you know, I, I don't want, I, I need to know more about five years from now, what's reasonable five years from now? I know you've been overly successful, and I, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but sitting in the audience back in 2017, you're very successful, okay? I'll just say that one, all right? But 100 to me is, is way out of it, okay? If five years from now, you know, you came back at, if the real number was 40, okay, total, then that tells me something too, and that, that maybe that's compromise. And I, I'm not, I would rather not build in an entire plan for the next 50 years. I would rather tighten that window up a little bit.
Well, and I think that's why we tried to share too, that currently we're making eight, like, what you could pull, right, would be 81 tons a day. Right now, if you look on a slow day, it's 215, a high day, it's 450, which now we understand, obviously, we're pulling this material from the Medway storage pile, we understand now with the trucking, what implication that had. So, I think what we're trying to indicate is we're already there. The availability factor was for if our volume went down, not necessarily if our volume went up coming back in front of you. So, that's why we were kinda going for a large number. First of all, hey, if we can crush 250 days, we can sell 150 days worth of material crushing. Then it was very apparent that when we went in the first meeting, that's not something the town was open to. So, we went to what does our company need? As we shared, we're really capped out of the location we're at as far as trucks, employees, within that 70 figure, and within the max volume you could do with said number of individuals. So, our growth plans now are more about outsourcing work and basically selling the brand, right? Getting the jobs, selling the brand, and subbing work. That's our next growth plan, because we were subs for US pavement, we saw what they did, we understand the, the benefit there, lower margin, but higher volume, without actually, you know, more impact from an insurance standpoint, from employee standpoint. So, truly, that is our growth. Our initial number coming to you, yes, was, hey, if we can make, if you guys are gonna say to us, okay, 250 days of crushing, we can make more material, sell more material, that's a phenomenal business venture for us, right? It quickly became apparent that it was more about what we needed as a company, and our misunderstanding, I thought in that conversation, when we were crunching numbers and working together, our understanding of the board at that time, or the kind of the feeling we got was that that 100 number was a lot more comfortable, and we knew that that would meet our needs, our as asphalt engineer, the operating entity that runs from Farm Street. So, this is why we're kind of stuck on this 100 number, because we kind of went right to what is the bottom line, because yes, we ideally, because of the timeline and wanting to implement this for this year because of our company need, yes, we, we were showing a sense of urgency, because our company does need this, right? So, that, and urgency was, okay, well, what do we need as a company? Okay, 100, we thought that that energy was there for. Okay, a hundred, we thought that that energy was there for the hundred and really we came right at the bottom line for our company. So this is where some of the back and the forth came from. Now, again, if that need changed, of course, we would love the opportunity to be able to sell the product, that's another conversation. I think when we talk about a hundred days versus 80 days versus 60 days, the implication on trucking, you're going from 1.3 trucks an hour to 1.1. I don't, per hour, so I don't know what the limiting of the crushing per hour really does from a traffic standpoint. And if we're not concerned about the sound implication and the piles aren't changing, stormwater management isn't changing. I guess my question would be, is if the company's need is a hundred, and you're talking about a very small influx per hour of the trucks. I guess my question is what we could do over the next month to show that we need that hundred days, I guess.
Yeah, I'm looking for that minor change to the permits. I know, I, I think we need to go through it, so I'm going to do it with Jim, but just to make sure it's right. But I'm looking, just, I'm looking for a minor change. And 20 days, you know, I, the 40, you know, moving up to 40, I can compare it to both today for 40 right now, as long as the, you know, the rest of the permit. I think the entire board. I think the board, but I'm trying to, this is a special permit. If I'm not mistaken, Jim, four, four out of five people who go to this.
Correct.
Um, makes it more difficult, so I think that we need to compromise a lot more.
So we did approach as a major change, permit vote, correct?
That's correct.
So we came in knowing that this was a major change to the permit, applied for it as a major change, sent the letters notification. And then, so I just want to be clear that we, we did.
You anticipated this was a major.
This was, right, everything is applied for as a major change. We weren't coming forward as this is some minor change.
Let me ask this question to Jim. So if this was a major change, I mean, here you involve. Other boards or conservation involved?
It depends on what the impacts are and what the board's request is. So, you know, the discussion at the last meeting was we needed more information on traffic, for instance. So I know Aaron had provided letter, I know Eli had made some mentions about some other, other items that could be provided. For needs more information on traffic, certainly welcome to request that. There's nothing in relation to conservation, and I've actually talked to the conservation team to confirm. Because the piles aren't changing, nothing on their plan will be changed, and so they, they think that it would be necessary to file.
I have an idea. Thinking as I'm talking, which is not good, which may have upset some people in the audience. Want to mention a word. How can we do this through phase instead of volume?
Right, so the issue with the phasing of the number of days.
Well, I, I know where I'm going.
But if we wanted to phase, okay, no outside sales, no outside delivery and sales as a phase.
I'm going to hear the rest of your.
Oh, sorry, my bad.
If I go to phase. On tonnage. I'm backing into additional costs every time that phase changes, correct? Okay, so phasing is not, not realist.
It's considered a major change with the DEP, because they base the number of tons that can be brought in each day based on the total crushing days allowed by the town.
And I don't think there's a way to sort of side door that by saying a hundred. Forty at the town, it turns to 60 with no complaints, because it's, that certainly is hiding the ball.
Okay, no, no, I, I don't want to do that, but trying to work the.
Yeah, I think it's going to take some degree of creativity, again. We really did look at this hundred number and try to figure out what sort of the bottom line where this starts to make sense at this site without. Again, we understand the parameters of the town, of the roads, of the, frankly, the acreage of the site. This can't be a full, you know, aggregate industries and stuff of theirs, huge locations, et cetera. This, we want to make sure that we have a right sized project for this. And in good faith, we thought that this hundred proposal may have been that. Certainly the pushback from the board and from number divide who has seen this site in action. There's obviously still more, more work to be done on the app, the applicant and from the applicant, but I. I, I'm hoping that in response to your suggestion that maybe we dismissed 40 out of 100. I hope that if the hundred number could be substantiated, that it wouldn't be. It's a third of the, or launch we sort of requested at the beginning. As we are trying to, in good faith, come off of our original ask, just something that makes sense and isn't going to harm the new.
But I, I get that, but the hundred earlier in the meeting included sale. So, so the hundred is what you need. Well, so. He's a baby, by the way.
Well, I mean, the more material that we make ourselves, the less material will bring elsewhere, right?
I get it, but we're going around the surface.
Sure.
There's a compromise, right? Let's find that compromise.
I was wondering, man, you got one more.
Yeah, so.
I'm sorry?
Sorry.
You have one more hearing tonight.
So while I was, can I, can I ask the board a question?
Sure.
I think we talked about, you know, resale. What about, you know, what about the other? Other company trucks coming in and out? What's the board's feeling on that? Other companies that are not subs, subs might be another separate conversation, and I'm treating the asphalt engineering really well. Okay, so when we get to, that's where I'm comfortable, I assume we'll speak with the one person. But, you know, it is. You know, I'm thinking, trying to figure out conditions that go with whatever number would come up. And what, what conditions, you know, can we complement? I, I think, you see, when you look at the sale. Hours of crushing. Number trips, you can potentially. Ask that the hours of operation be cut back a little bit on a Saturday for the benefit of the neighbors. So you don't have trucks coming down the street. Also try to maybe look at the trucking, to try to distribute it more during. Work hours, when people aren't at home. You know, as opposed to after they've gotten home, also taking into consideration maybe. School hours. But I, I think we have room for the. For compromise, compromise for the trucks, the sales, the crushing. And the overall.
And this is for outside, yes.
Yes, sir, outsides, like the sale, like, I, I don't want to speak for me, but, and I've asked the board this, is, you know. I, I consider asphalt engineering and your other ones to be one of the same, okay? So to me.
You're telling yourself.
Selling to, selling between you and you, I think, you know.
So we'll make sure the legal speed comes around, but gotcha.
Jim will make sure that, you know, I'm not here with the rest of the board, I mean, I'm speaking for one person, and you need four votes.
Right.
So is that something the board, the board all, is the board, we don't want to, you know, negotiate ahead of time, but.
Nope.
But that's, that's the same thing to me, right? I want to get back to something, I want to about hiding the ball, I don't want to hide the ball. But it's in essence, transferring material. From onsite, you know, from one location to another, within the confines of the savings. Correct? So you're, you're selling from one company to another.
But that's not even a profit, it's a fixed issue.
Well, then eventually it's taken, you're doing the work, but yeah, I mean, you're going from the front to the back to get the product, I mean.
Right, I think it's just on paper, right?
I mean, yeah, I mean, you got to, right, yeah. Yeah, it's helpful on paper, at the end of the day, to sell materials, we have not done yet, because we've got to set all that up. But it would be helpful to legally be able to sell that to asphalt.
When this was presented to me, it said sale, you know. An option we were uncertain, right? We did not know that sale was within the confines of your business.
Well, initially we were asking for both, I mean, we are, I mean, that's, that's what we were asking. But now, after that first conversation, we went, okay, what do we just need for asphalt engineering? Hundred days of crushing.
Maybe you come up with a terminology. That that's not saying, you know.
Right.
Transferring material from one league to another.
We have to pay sale tax on it, so that is.
Okay. I'm sorry, yeah, Sergeant Rolls?
A little signage goes a long way, beginning of the conversation, you had said that you were. We're for some sign.
Absolutely.
On the road, you know, partners, if you come and, uh, wear a cape with. Yeah, we talk with you. All, all went in your sleeves.
We have, uh. We, we earmarked $7,500 to, if there's some way to do mitigation or signage package or something that makes sense. That is something to talk.
Well, this is an increase in our capital.
Absolutely.
Good, but you know, we, we, this was not, you know, discussed before.
I just have one quick question, do you need outside vintage product to meet your crushing needs? You can't bring enough volume in yourself.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, for sure.
Okay, so you don't, you can't create enough volume in your business.
Oh, yeah.
But you, so you need outside vendors.
No, 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 we have enough volume in our own business.
You don't need outside vendors.
We do not need them for the hundred days of crushing, no.
We can eliminate them.
Helpful if our fluctuation of what are any of the company change.
So we have a motion for the board to continue this to the August meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please, send the party staying on.
Alright.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
One more is seeing.
Thank you all for the time.
I apologize if, you know, I, I just looked at the document.
Sure, sure, I understand.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, I'll, I'll wake up Mark Allen and Mike Dryden.
Yeah.
You guys are awake.
Let's talk to the west coast. I'm on my fourth caffeinated beverage for the evening.
And like to be.
Can we tell us what steps on the agenda?
Yeah, so next on the agenda is Red Mill, a bit of submission. So as you may recall, at the last meeting, we're working, the board was requesting a draft decision. We work towards, I have, I have a real robust draft decision in place. However, there have been some changes since our last meeting with the plant set, and, and the plans just aren't quite there just yet. But it looks like they're making a little bit of progress. I believe, you know, we should be having that discussion at the August 12th meeting if the board's okay with that. However, tonight, we have one thing that the applicant has requested, now that the plan is, is in pretty good shape in its final form. They've been working with their, their subs on, on road, and I don't believe it's asphalt engineering, but I could be wrong. And they wanted to relook at that phasing plan and wanted to come in tonight to discuss that. So, Mark or Mike, I don't know if anybody wants to pull that.
I just ask one question, Jim, before I go there. Last night you had a meeting with the conservation.
Yes.
And what was the result of that meeting?
Yeah, so I know, I'm sure Mike and Mark can talk to it, but I thought the conservation meeting was rather productive. They, the applicant has responded to the peer review, which was, again, if you remember, there was some, for the drainage that was necessary. And so conservation is just vetting that now, and I'm hopeful that they will be concluding their review here next meeting.
So we're on track for that table decision, still waiting.
Yeah, hopefully so, yeah, that, I'm, I'm hoping for that in August.
Thank you.
And Mike or Mark, who's presenting today?
Michael, if you can take the, the lead, I'm going to go try to find that phasing plan to bring it up.
You mean the previous phasing plan?
Uh, the current one, the new one.
I do have that.
You do, okay, great.
So allow me to bring that up if I can share my screen. So as you may recall, we were proposing a total of three phases, and I have those exhibits as well. Can everybody see that, by the way?
Thank you, Sergeant.
No, not yet.
Oh, that's, I'm not sure why not. Can you see it now?
Almost, yep.
Great. As, as long as we've been doing this Zoom thing, there's always complications somehow, some way. So a- as originally proposed, we were talking about three phases, and I, I guess it just makes sense to start there, let me, let me do that. This is the phasing plan that was currently before the board, and it's three phases. And it's probably a little difficult to see here, but the shaded area essentially is Road A, which goes all the way through the site out to Route 140. So it entails, great, it entails the roadway construction, the basins that are dependent on that drainage area. All the lots that front on Road A as phase one. Phase two are essentially the, the white areas, the stippled areas that you see here. And then finally, phase three was Road D, which is now a lollipop configuration, as you know. So the current thinking is to go to a two-phase plan, which looks, if I can get to it. Which I can't. It's the graphic that I just had up, it's essentially a two-phase plan. I don't know sure why I can't.
Board has, I believe, print copies anyways, so.
Here we go. The actual Zoom bar actually blocks my ability to, to click that, but I have it here. So this, the proposal is for two phases, and as you know, we have a, a stream crossing here. So the thinking here is to avoid that crossing initially. And phase one is outlined in red, which is essentially a combination of a par- partial phase one and two combined into one. The, the unit count mark, correct me if I'm wrong, is essentially very close to what was originally proposed under phase A, or phase one.
Right. Yeah, it's, it's only a handful of number of units.
Yeah, and the, the, the real reason here is, as you know, we have some significant ledge to deal with out at 140. And to build, for, for the applicant to build the entirety of Road A, all of the basins, sewer pump stations, the ledge excavation, the crossings that are associated with it. It's an enormous undertaking for only a handful of units essentially in, in the first phase. So Kevin Lobeser has asked us to explore this with the board. To see if the board would be willing to entertain a two-phase scenario, again, where we don't perform that crossing at the perennial stream in this location.
And if, and if I could just kind of jump in after Michael's presentation, just to sort of elaborate. Phase one would incorporate all of the common street extension up to the, the intersection, the, the signalized intersection. It would provide all of the infrastructure associated with the common street extension down to Mill Street. It would allow the sewer connection from Town Hall, it would allow all of the Mill Street. Street improvements, i.e. water and gas upgrades, and all of the sidewalk additions. As well as providing, you know, access to about 92 units as opposed to 86 units of development. So there really wouldn't be a huge delta in the number of units serviced by phase. But what this does, as Mike said, is it, it allows the applicant to, to, you know, utilize the same number of units. But to sort of stockpile material in phase two by, by fully developing phase one. Phase one is where the, the majority of the cut is going to be anyway. And that excess cut needs to go somewhere, and, and where that goes is basically in the cyan or the blue color in phase two. You know, we've, we've received comments back from, from Don DiMartino, initial comments about. Water infrastructure, you know, testing the water, we were more than amenable to, to list, to, to listening to Don's comments. As you probably know, just topographically, when the, when the, when the development is lower than the main street. You're still going to maintain some pressure, but we would, you know, be more than amenable to, to pressure testing that, that lowest point, lowest hydrant down at the end of phase one. As Michael said, that the big negative, the big nut to crack is to do two crossings of wetlands and blasting an enormous amount of ledge to get out to Lincoln. Of wetlands and blasting an enormous amount of ledge to get out to Lincoln properties. And to develop two sewer pump stations. So the, the infrastructure, um, volume is just significantly increased. And we just kind of like to sort of play apples to apples for a number of units and phases and just do it in two phases instead of, instead of one, uh, instead of three. I hope I wasn't on mute.
Can I?
Is anyone else on their side?
Nope, I think we did.
Okay.
Um, so since it's ten past ten, so let's get down to brass tacks. And I'm not comparing, um, Kevin to another applicant that I'm thinking of. So we have historically. Entered into building arrangements where there are large sweeping phases. There are sort of repercussions to, to. Uh, the neighborhood and things like that. And I know there's not much of a neighborhood in that area. Um, so leaving large, large phases concerns me just generally, just based on our trouble with them in the past with other applications. My other concern is. My other concern is that there's a lot of material leaving this site. And it was a subject of a special department of the zoning board. And the, there was concern about traveling through, um, through the center of town and, and trying to get to the, uh. To the other exit as quickly as possible so that there could be a sharing of that. Burden and, and getting everything to flow out that way, which is a much more desirable way to get the material off the site. So, um, I think, and I'll refer to Jim, but I would think that this changes that. Where, where the material goes and, and do we have to go back before the zoning board to change how that's all going to play out? In terms of this, now I have a, I'll, I'll save it for another day, outside of that.
So, uh, Mark, that's a, that's a good point. Um, is there, I know, I know the, you have the screen that's kind of the dividing line there. Um, was there any thought to maybe, maybe now a full build out of that connector road all the way to Lincoln? But maybe some sort of like, uh, a hall road of some kind or something like that? Because the, yeah, Brian's right, the zoning board, you know, was very careful trying to get it out to that direction.
Yep, no, absolutely, and, and a great question. What we would propose is to, uh, keep that existing historical wetland crossing. So as to take the material out of phase one in red. And instead of trucking the material offsite, uh, we could actually build up the phase two project. Um, a, a, at the same time. So I think there'd be, uh, a net zero in number of trucks coming in and out of the site. Although, you know, northbound traffic would be using Mill Street, southbound traffic would be using Common Street. Um, but what this, what this would allow is that, um. Phase one could be, uh, leveled and, and pad ready and the material stored in phase two. Uh, to get that site pad ready, but not, uh, building permits or lots released in that phase. Uh, I totally understand that, you know, the initial intent was to get the entire through road done through, through Road A. Um, and that would have, like I said, entailed about eighty-six units just to kind of flow left and right and the earth removal to go left and right. Uh, but in all reality, in order, even, even in the current, uh, zoning board decision. It would be the majority of the, 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 the earth removal would have been done in that sort of the red line phase. And gone out through, uh, Mill Street and through Common Street. And then the second crossing would come later and then get pushed through at the end. So we did make that representation at the zoning board that it would be, uh, you know, eventually connected. But it would be, you know, a much taller task, uh, to get out to that Lincoln properties intersection.
But it's just to be devil's advocate. Sounds then, there's only one phase where there's. There's materials being removed from phase one and then construction and work, not construction, but infrastructure, laying down that material on phase two. That sounds like one big thing.
Uh, yeah, I guess, I guess the terminology for phasing, I guess, should be, I guess it's a little gray as far as. Getting building permits and being allowed to, uh, develop home sites and getting lots released in phase one. As opposed to getting the lots released and, 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 and doing all the infrastructure for phase two.
I, I, I'm uncomfortable by this large sweeping phase. And then, and then again, it has nothing to do with Kevin. Um, but, uh, things happen, economies, you know, through the real estate market tanks. And then we're left with, and, and I know it's a, it's a gravel pit down, but it's, we're left with a half. So that's a half constructed phase that sits there for eight years. And the materials are all still, I mean, it's just. I'm, I'm uncomfortable generically.
And, and if I could, Brian, what, what makes you uncomfortable? Just the, the traffic continuity?
No, so. If, you know, phase one's. Go, if, say you, you're working on phase one, moving materials to phase two, you're doing whatever that entails. Market collapses. This project's abandoned or it's just sitting on itself for a while. We have this crater, right? Uh, in our town that in other, for other applicants who don't aspire to the same level of quality as Kevin does. Um, that has caused significant problems for the town. And I just wouldn't want to see a half started construction project sit there for years. Literally years, right, while this, that one bay will be built out. Okay, sure.
May, maybe, uh, Mark, maybe if you wanted to give, if you were adamant about pushing for this phasing, may, perhaps there is, um. You know, you could provide some information in terms of construction management, you know, there could be opportunities where, for instance, where that Road A sits. That you leave the, a lot of the vegetation there and, and make a small hall road where you're going to leave, uh, material. And then you provide procedures for stabilization or something like that. Uh, because I, I understand what Brian's saying, you know, you basically are just blowing out the entirety of the site. But only working on half of it and the other half is just kind of a, um, amount of material, uh, for, like you say.
Yep, no, that's an extremely valid point. And, uh, if, if in the current scenario, uh, I don't know if Michael can just kind of pan down on the page. But the, the current three-phase scenario would have an equivalent, I guess, land disturbance area, if not more. Uh, all of Road A would be designed and built and blasted and, and, and lack of a better term, a crater, a crater creative. Um, uh, so we, we're feeling it's sort of apples to apples if, if all of the red zone for, for phase one. Would sort of be equivalent in land area to clear and blast and, and, and blow up. All of Road A, all the way out to Lincoln properties. There really isn't a, a, a delta significant in the, in the overall land disturbance, if you will.
But then, but then the trucks can leave out that, right? The all the materials out, which was, this was the intended effect.
Yeah, so what I'm saying, Brian, is we could, we could utilize onsite material. Whereas phase one doesn't allow us, in, in the current situation, phase one doesn't allow us to build up this, the, 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 the Road D, um, properties. Um, it, it basically says, you know, it's just Road A, the townhomes and some few selected frontage lots on Road A. If we're, if we're allowed to just do this red line for, for phase one. And we can just stockpile material and get, and get phase two pad ready, not ask for any lot releases. Uh, we could manage the, the trucking and the materials, uh, equally as in the current situation.
Yeah, I, I, I'll defer to Jim and, and Frank about, you know, what, what they feel is, um. You know, if they feel this is appropriate, I'm just, just my uninformed impression was big phases scare me.
Can I ask a question again, Jim? Do you have some ideas on this?
Oh. We were just talking about you, you want to open this road so we can utilize, that's what you want to move the traffic and all the way through the whole thing? And his problem is the river?
Well, yeah, so there, there was a special permit through the zoning board of how the materials going to. Sort of be distributed out of the site.
Right.
Over time.
Do you have a problem in doing the one, the road without doing this other phase?
Yeah, I, I think that would be great.
Right. Was the river the issue though?
I've never heard of the river.
Okay.
Are you referring to the process?
Yeah.
How many trucks, how many dump trucks of dirt are you pulling out of here? Did you have to permit for it from the zoning board?
Twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand of dump trucks?
Yeah.
And, and that's right now, if we do this current phase and that's going to come through the center of town? The proposal that you got for the phase, if, if we go for this, the trucks would be coming through the center of town.
They would be split under the current phase.
Yeah. Phase one.
Current phasing plan.
Right, there'd be three phases and, and, uh, the twenty-five thousand trucks would be built, uh, into an equation over, you know, seven to 10 years. It's, it's not, it's not all going to happen tomorrow.
If I, if I could, um, and these are more fire department and, and maybe, uh, safety and DPW. But two, two questions. One would be, phase one would appear to have one access for residents. And I guess, and maybe you can do something with the hall road as an emergency access or something like that. And then the second one tied to that would be, um, you usually like to have two means of water supply. Again, for fire protection and stuff. And, um, if you're not going to build that portion that's in the, the sea and color the blue. How are you going to have a second access to water? And that's more like a, a Don DiMartino, maybe already talked about it. And I'll be quiet now.
Yeah, we did, we did discuss that, Frank, and that was a great question. Um, and I think we have a, a sort of a pow out, uh, scheduled for July 27th about exactly that and other issues. Um, but, uh, Don laid out a couple of, uh, really good items to sort of check. To make sure that we have adequate pressure and volume in that, in that phase one, if you will. Uh, the benefit is that it's, it's at a low point in, in the entire hydraulic water, uh, uh, collection or, or. Or water system, if you will. So it's not as if we're going uphill, you know, on the top of a mountain and getting less pressure and less volume. So I, I think, uh, you know, with further discussion, uh, July 27th, that would help us. I think tonight was just more of a forum of, would the planning board be, um, uh, amenable to, to entertaining this option? This two-phase option versus three-phase option? Knowing that the total number of units is, is just within a handful of numbers. Provided we work out all of the fire and the water suppression issues, uh, that, that we know are, are forthcoming.
Yeah, maybe it's.
Um, is it possible? That you have a meeting, I believe you gave it on July 27th. That we provide some additional information with more detail points and discussion points for our August meeting? So we can, nothing other than just, um, outline tonight.
Absolutely.
Progress to make it better to say.
Absolutely, yeah, I, I hope that after.
Build this project over time and how we spread out those twenty-five thousand trips over time through each location? And the viability of a hall road, if that's appropriate?
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely. Mr. Chairman, uh, I think after July 27th, once we work out sort of the, the nuts and bolts on, on if this can work. We would absolutely come back before you on, uh, August, uh, 12th to, to discuss that.
Then is that a fair compromise?
Absolutely.
Jim?
No, that's perfect. And I, I, you know, on the 27th, we can certainly make some time maybe to talk about your, your truck, truck patterns and all that as well.
Yeah, I want to try to minimize the impact on the downtown building residents during this process.
It's something to think about too, maybe we can use helicopter.
Helicopter.
I'm sorry, I'm going to give the motion to, uh. Continue this to our meeting in August.
Second.
The motion of Florida, continue the phasing plan for Red Mill to our August meeting. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passing, you know this.
I, uh, if you'd like, I know a lot of the time, general business, none of them are time sensitive. Have to, have to bring those back in August.
Okay. I want to thank everyone participating here and, uh, by Zoom. Appreciate all your comments.
Thanks, buddy.
Thank you. Motion adjourned? All in favor of adjournment at ten point? Please stay on, I say on. Opposed, motion passing, we're adjourned.